Right, let's call it being ordered six thirty-two, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Here.
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 Presence. Alright, mayoral reports, couple holidays that law enforcement day. Was last week, and then Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day, the village is closed that. That day, I observe it's the holiday. We have a couple other knowledge in our memories. So, we recently, this week heard that former village employee Claude and Bear passed away last week. He was involved with construction of the bandshell, and implementing the Thursday night concerts. He was also involved with facade programs, midnight madness, Scoop de Loop, Williamburg Wetland Sanctuary, Fourth of July, beautification, Halloween Howl, Oktoberfest, economic development, you know, going so on and so on, a lot of.
Walmart.
Walmart, a lot of programs and developments we had today. He was the community development director in nineteen ninety-three. And for those sitting out there wondering about inflation, his annual salary was thirty thousand dollars a year, so. That was a while ago. I also want to, it's not in my notes, but we have a couple new faces here that people maybe have not met. So we have our new finance director, Michael Peterson, I don't know if you wanna come up and introduce yourself? Give a brief, uh, brief little. History of your professional career, um, where you live.
I'm here, Antioch. Um, so I served Grayslake for fourteen years, Lincolnshire for fourteen years, eight years. Fourteen years installed, fourteen years Grayslake, Lincolnshire. Eighteen months North Chicago, three months in Park, and one year in Lake County. As a contractor. Happily married, thirty-six and a half years, two kids, three grandkids. Keep me busy, but happy to be here.
Alright, yeah, we had to kick him out of the building this weekend, he was here all weekend. Thank, thank you. We also have Howard. Howard Pari, uh, community development director, I'm just taking place of Mike Birkin, so. Howard and I spent a lot of time together today, tell the board a little bit about yourself.
So my name is Howard Pari, I've been a planner the last twenty-four years. I was originally born, raised, created in New York City, so I'm from the East Coast originally. Bachelor, master's degree from the City University of New York, under college, City College. Planning background, but planning, zoning, historic preservation, hazard mitigation. Spent two years working with FEMA as a hazard mitigation planner during Hurricane Sandy, the aftermath. Hurricane devastated New York and its high state area. I worked with disaster survivors. Sustainability, resiliency planning, I'm also interested. I have a lead AP, leadership in energy, environmental design. Professional, so I see everything in more of a holistic manner towards climate change and trying to build better buildings or greener. Uh, some of the communities I've worked, large and small. Nashua, New Hampshire, Cranford, New Jersey, Plymouth, Massachusetts, I've done a lot of historic preservation with the Rock and the. Uh, applying for grant money for the, uh, I call it a museum, Imperial Hill, Imperial Hill. I've also worked for Brereton Township, FEMA, like I mentioned, after Hurricane Sandy in two thousand thirteen. And I came to the Chicagoland areas, I worked in Park Ridge, City of Blue Island, North Chicago, and now I'm here, so. I've worked in large, small communities under different pretexts, pretexts, you know, under different guidance and. Stuff.
Thank you, welcome. We owe an apology to Mayor Rockingham from North Chicago, because half the table, I think, used to work there at one point recently, so. Including Chip Moran, but thank you, and I think you're giving a report tonight, so we'll get to your power tonight.
And I'm, I, I live, I live in Chicago Northwest, Jefferson Park, so I drive up here every day. My wife works in Libertyville, so we drive together.
Thank you. Alright, um, I saw some people signing up for public comment, so. Thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates certain stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. Board's efforts to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. Board must protect this ability in a form of this meeting, please be respectful for the duties of the board and the management credit classes and comments tonight. Please state your name, address your comments to the board, please limit your comment to three minutes. Please be actual encourage us and board request that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or kind of setting members of the board off. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during public comments.
Okay, alright, I know the first two are here to address this, so, uh, I do have, the board does have a memo from Mr. Holzman, so. The speaker's not, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Darcy DeSault, and I live in Antioch on Lakewood Drive. And Fran Anno is here also, it is the resident of Antioch. We are here representing, representing Gerald Vito and also Bill Holzman, who are handicapped. And we are looking into to see if we can have your help as a village to support. And try to find out if we can get pace transportation, to have more transfer. A handicap here in town, not just for our two friends that we had mentioned, but for the other people in Antioch. Um, tonight, Bill and Gerald are not able to come to us because they were not able to get transportation, because they settled hours. And also for Bill, who is wheelchair accessible, which I know that a few of you do know Bill, um, because of the climate outside. And with that, I'll turn that over to Fran for some issues that we would like to share with you.
We, we wrote down a statement of if the two men could be here, what, what they would say to you, so. They both live in the Oak Ridge Apartments. So we are here to speak on behalf of handicapped and wheelchair-bound Antioch residents. As it relates to pace bus availability. The first concern is that pace is not available after five thirty PM. This causes handicapped users to be unable to attend evening meetings or events. Getting picked up at four thirty-five o'clock is no good if you cannot get returned to your home. The second point that we want to make is that there's a, a big difficulty in using pace for a trip. And you cannot call on the day that you wanna go, certainly, but calling even a day, two, three days before. Often results in, no, I'm sorry, we, you don't have any availability. So these two men, you know, are used to calling a week to two weeks before. And even then, sometimes they say, no, we have no reservation available. There's absolutely no guarantee that you can pick up the phone and get a trip where you wanna go. In conclusion, what we're asking for them is that you are elected representatives. Help us out with pace, because us, the residents, talking to them, it's, it's, we've tried, it doesn't work.
There's two of you, so you'll have six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the stand.
No, you take your turn.
So, we're asking if someone, I don't know whose duties that would fall under. If you could please look into two things. One, if they could, if we could secure nighttime service until at least eight PM. And number two, seeing what can be done to increase their availability to the Antioch residents. You know, I don't know if they come out of, do you know, Darcy, uh, Libertyville or? I think it's Libertyville, so Antioch's like, eh, not so important, but to the handicapped residents, it's very important. And, you know, this wheelchair-bound people, they need the lift. You know, a handicapped person like Gerald Vito has one useful arm and one not useful arm. But he, you know, he could be picked up by Darcy, right, but, uh, Bill Holzman, he can't walk, so. Anyway, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, and thank you.
Just so these lovely young ladies are aware, Jim Moran already did reach out to Pace proactively when we received this letter. Engagement and conversation, we haven't made a lot of headway yet, uh, we have learned that the pace services here are collaborations to Lake County. Their Riley County program that is funded, just grant funding to the regional transportation authority. So we have begun conversations with Pace to see what we can do to better serve our local residents, especially those with some additional needs with transportation. Will you plan to report back to the board once we are able to get some additional information from Pace and I hope to do some work with Riley County's.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, there are three items on the consent agenda, is there any request to remove any of those items? Alright, I'm not, I'm not taking a motion in seconds. Trustee Pierce, second trustee Luther.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, voting yes, one abstention, onto the regular business. First item is consideration and approval to gratify payments of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four accounts payable as prepared by staff. In the amount of one million forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and eighty-four cents, who have a motion and is second.
So, um.
Second trustee Berman, any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, item. Five, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of eight hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. Who have a motion in the second.
So, um.
Trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce, any discussion, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of equipment. For the community unit for the Village of Antioch, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Resolution number twenty-five dash oh one, who have a motion in the second. Trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman, is a new item, so any discussion or questions?
Yes, just very briefly for the board, this is a connection to our future village hall renovation. Our construction and design team has worked to identify pieces of equipment that may have lost lead times. Rooftop unit for the heating and cooling system for the building has exceeded its useful lifespan, it was installed in the building well over twenty years ago. When it was first constructed, so it's been identified as a very substantial piece of equipment that needs to be replaced. It's the optimal time to do a lot of the work and redesigning the building, um, there is a fourteen seven, or I'm sorry, a seventeen to twenty work lead time on this. So we intend to get into village hall by the end of summer, we need to place the order in advance so it's secure when it's actually installed.
A quick question, sorry, um, I, I might have missed it in packet. The price that is listed, is that specifically for the unit, or does that include, like I saw. Something about the crane, does that include like the installation and the crane?
Well, it, towards the bottom, it tells you this, um, the installer.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions about that item? Uh, roll call, please.
Berman?
Yes.
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 I.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, we have six voting yes, motion carries. Um, first, these are all related, the next three items. First is a consideration and approval of ordinance granting land, your property located at the northeast corner of Route one seventy-three and Lincoln Avenue. The village of Antioch, Illinois, this is for special use for protecting lanes, this is ordinance number twenty-five dash oh one dash two. Who have a motion in the second, waiting in the second. Motion trustee Luther, second trustee Pierce, thank you, Mr. Gachau. There it is now, in August in here, um, alright, uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Alright, six voting yes, motion carries, and number eight, consideration and approval of a resolution approving a site plan for real property located at the northeast corner. Of Route one seventy-three and Lincoln Avenue, in the village of Antioch, Illinois. Core acquisition LLC marketplace, outlets one through three, resolution number twenty-five dash oh two, who have a motion in the second.
So.
Motion trustee Bill, second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Uh, item number nine, consideration and approval of a resolution granting a preliminary and final plat of subdivision. The property located in the village of Antioch, Illinois, northeast corner of Route one seventy-three and Lincoln Avenue, outlets one through three. Resolution number twenty-five dash oh three, I'll take a motion in the second. Motion trustee Luther, second trustee McNeil, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, sorry, don't get done there, um, the minister.
Hey, VR, uh, you still a little bit of my founder again, I was just curious, Mike, what, uh, Howard considered, they were luckily have been taken up on staff. Doing a wealth of experience to our team, at kind of a turbulent end of the year with the staffing situation, a lot of our. Senior staff taking advantage to retire at the end of the year, so it's been a pleasure to help rebuild, rebuild the organization and get, get some fresh perspectives. Um, so the board is aware, we have begun the process of recruiting for our next Parks and Recreation Department Director, that position has been posted. Um, Rory and Jim Moran, and Jeff and Gila, our current interim director, all working on vetting applications and. Please to report that so far, we've got some really good prospects that are coming in, real qualified applicants, at least on paper. Uh, village hall continues to progress, uh, we've kind of given the final stamp of approval. Um, kind of a layout, a lot of the design features, uh, we plan to go out to the bid. In May twenty-seven, that bidding and vetting of, uh, of contractors by our construction manager will take several weeks, so right now we're targeting February twenty-sixth to bring. The bid packages for the board for review and approval, allows us to start moving forward. Design development continues on our Public Works facility, um, just so the board is aware, we continue to work towards. Taking, retaking possession of the vendor property, all of the legal documents necessary to execute the return of this property to the village for the project, since they have. Um, all of the abandoned plants from the community center on that site have been located. Aha, this is officially moved against a portion of the former senior center building. I'd like to thank our public works staff for helping with a lot of the heavy lifting associated with that move. Aha, director is very happy, um, they're making, making a new home at the former senior center, they're excited to be able to further serve the community. This expanded space, it's, it's nice to see them not have the grand three people in one office, so I think it's gonna give a great addition to the wonderful services they offer our community. Budgeting season has begun for staff. Like, now is a little bit tight scheduled, probably would like to be typically. Um, not been expected with the transition staff, with the retirement of Director Torres, and Director. Mike Peterson coming in, taking a little bit to immerse himself in kind of the, the village's finances and wrap his arms around it, take ownership of that budget, so. We don't anticipate any delays that may not come for the work quite as early as, as we got it ready last year. Um, this afternoon, the Lake County Member Board, our new solidified, solidified dispatch center, did adopt its first annual operating budgets. Um, just, just north of fifteen million dollars to serve the county. Our share is projected right now, based on those preliminary numbers, to be roughly three hundred and eighty thousand. Current cost this year of the CENTCOM is three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, so year one, we are anticipating to see. Cost savings on actual dispatch services through this consolidation again. Um, that was kind of a long-term target, one of the long-term targets of this is to, um, bring actual costs to communities, and that's the subsidies that are going to some. Uh, it's, it's a little bit, um, difficult to project what the true costs of the operations are if. The board may be aware, um, currently Lake County ETSB that we are a part of, uh, is reforming into a joint ETSB. And the current nine-one-one surcharge is collected throughout the county, we're gonna be redirected to the joint ETSB. Through the Lake County arrangement, we historically have provided the impact computers and some other technology components through the Lake County ETSB funding. But those, those costs are gonna be shifted to the individual municipalities moving forward, so it'll be a kind of important budget. There will be some kind of good cost savings on one end, but cost increase on the other, and probably say a year or two for us to really have a firm grasp on. What the overall impacts are gonna be. And as a reminder, village offices will be closed Monday in service of MLK Day. Also, just like publicly recognize the talent and thank our public works department, uh, they've been dealing with some water main breaks within the community. Very, very frigid temperatures, so a lot of our, warming our homes and our offices, they're out there, making sure that our, our public water system is, will be effectively and efficiently, so. Again, this is what I take, I think they make that probably. I'll be there for some certain questions.
Um, wanna, could you, uh, just fill the board in, um, our, not the details of it, but that we're closing the cafe finally?
Sure, so, so, so very, very high level, we have a vendor, we are very close to an agreement, we sat down with the vendor today, I don't know if you'd like to announce. Uh, so the Vienna from the Latte Cafe, we are a vendor, Cafe Building, we work with Attorney Viselli today, they go through a lot of the finer details of the lease. Um, there's some work that has to be done, as the board is aware, to make. Or, type of vision that the board has, uh, there's gonna be some costs associated with it, we don't have a firm, firm grasp on the cost right now. The village electrician is hopefully able to do a lot of the work, save some costs for that, but, um, we're hoping to get that work started in the next two weeks, there's gonna be. Some minor things like outlets that are gonna have to be added, a two-twenty service for some espresso makers, ice makers, that sort of thing. Um, and then there's probably a little bit heavier lifts that are gonna have to be done, sink that was installed was part of the design, it's probably a little bit adequate for restaurant services. Um, so we're gonna have to probably work with the contractor to have that upgraded or replaced, so it works to fit the need, but hopefully, uh. Their discussions, we're hoping to have them open running by Memorial Day Mayor.
Yeah, she said April first, with those, those Memorial Days, so we can get this.
Alright, trustee Luther, then, um, just as you mentioned it, uh, the Aha transfer. Former trustee, uh, Mary Dabiniak reached out to me this evening, she was hoping to be here tonight, but she's under the weather. Um, but she asked that I pass along a message on behalf of her and the board of directors and staff of Aha that. They wanted to thank the board and, and, uh, and the village for approving the memorandum of understanding for Aha, and to thank Jim Moran specifically. For his help with the transition and.
Thank you, anything, thank you, um, clerk? Alright, any trustees? Alright, I'm not taking a motion to adjourn. McNeil, second trustee Peterson, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, five in favor, one opposed, we're actually gonna end on time, start the next meeting at seven o'clock. Alright, let's call this being ordered at six thirty-eight. I know, but we have no chance. Alright, uh, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Present.
Present.
Present, um, alright, so first item on regular business approval of the December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes as presented. Motion trustee McNeil.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, um, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries, um, next item is a discussion regarding the collaboration of services with the Lynn Harris Park District. Um, for reference, um. I guess it's the first year I, actually, gave mayor, looked at the first budget, I was astounded at some of the finances with our parks department and. Um, the negative amount on there, and so, um, obviously Jeff, who you all met, came in here, uh, with a many, many, many years of experience. Uh, many different park departments, park districts, whether here or abroad, to look at our operations, so, uh. Our staff has been working diligently on this, I, um, Missouri Gachau. Assistant Bram and Jeff have really, other than having to deal with personnel issues, uh, for eighty percent of the time. Um, have really spent a lot of time on this, so thank you for this presentation to the, and the, and the background on it.
Thank you, I, I'm kind of the table setter for Jim here, uh, wanted to give like a, kind of a six-month review of the time I was here. And still am, and really provide some objective, you know, really observations on the operations. And the mission of the, you know, Parks and Recreation Department. And, uh, the first thing I did is I went out and physically did a physical assessment of all our parks and our open spaces, I thought that was integral. Perfect time of the year, late summer, grass is growing, trees are blooming, you can tell the turf and the tree health as well. Uh, and I'm not gonna go through each park, I'm just gonna point out some commonalities, but I'm also gonna provide some good news too. Uh, as far as kind of looking at national standards on how Village of Antioch measures certain parklands, really classifications. So types of parks are typically mini neighborhood and, uh, community parks. That's all based on the type of park it is classified, if it serves as like a subdivision, be for the park, mini parks being small. Really kind of areas, community park would be Timosman Park or even Sequoia Creek Park, because of the specialty, like amenities within them. But I just wanted to go through, and this is all gonna lead, I promise, to where what Jim's gonna talk about. Basically, the village has a hundred and sixty-five acres of park, and national standards, it's basically six and a quarter to ten and a half acres per thousand, so, uh, that range is ninety-two to one fifty-five. So Antioch is above that really level of total park, that's a good thing. Mini parks, once again, uh, basically you're at. Is, you've exceeded that, mini parks, national standard is basically three point seven five, and we have seven point three eight neighborhood parks. Standard is fourteen seven to twenty-nine five acres, we have sixty-eight acres, once again, on scale that's exceeded, and also community parks. We're in the range, the range is seventy-three to hundred and eighteen acres, we have seventy-eight, which includes Timosman Park, so. We're at or above what national standards are for the different types of classifications of parks. And one really important thing is these are developed parks, they're not natural spaces, they're actually developed parks where people can. Uh, take part in active or passive recreation, not just looking at a whole bunch of cattails. Park amenities, you know, we're also measurable, there's a lot of measurable standards on that, and I will say for the. Basically, most part, we're at some types of amenity limits or criteria, basketball courts, we're a little low. I don't think that's, you know, really a surprise. Uh, there's tennis, we're right on it, we have seven courts, we should have about seven, seven and a half. Uh, baseball fields, we exceed all the baseball fields, the small, large sizes, and this includes Timosman Park. If it wasn't for that park, we'd be below in a lot of these different, uh, sport amenities. And the pool, of course, um, you know, twenty thousand basic residents, kind of national standard level, they said you should have a pool. We have fifteen, we have a pool, so that's a really good thing. We also have some special use amenities, which we pointed out, uh, we should include the bandshell, not a lot of people have a bandshell. So that's a really cool thing to have, splash pad, you know, although they're growing in numbers and popularity, that's one. Thing that a lot of places don't quite have yet, in your boardwalk, you're naturally great, wonderful. And that should be applauded to have that as well. So the, you know, basically the inventory parks is strong. Some of the amenities could use a little bump. So I just wanted to pass that on as far as quantitative kind of measurement, you know, the village of, of Antioch is good. The condition of these facilities and amenities is another story. We do have, you know, a lot of work to do. I don't think there would be any argument that, you know, basically all our paved areas, which includes our parking lots and our tennis courts, needs work. And they're in certain levels, need a repair. For example, Springer, it's not that bad yet. I recommend putting some new color branding, putting color before it turns into a gent's, you know, basically where the cracks. So there's some basic maintenance to be done, some pool, basic renovation to be done, some more paved areas. The good news is Centennial Park, we got the Ozland. So that's, you know, a tennis court renovation is part of that. So we get to catch up a little bit on some of these amenities and basically looking at the really condition of those. So I wanted to share really not only the quantitative, but also kind of qualitative thing. Because if you start looking at our playgrounds as well, we're all past our useful life. Basic useful life in the industry is thirteen years now. That's kind of short. Some, I mean, some places over twenty, but we're still past that, quite a few playgrounds. Once again, good news, Centennial Park, you know, because all know, you know, I know there's an emotional attachment to any wooden playground in, in this country. It's something that's been basically phased out for safety purposes. It don't necessarily meet CPSC guidelines and certainly not ASTM standards for manufacturing. So although there's an emotional attachment to those kind of things, I guarantee you the kids will love to do playground. Because it's all about the kids. We might have that, you know, heart string drawn a little bit because I played there, but that's an indicator it might be kind of replaced. So, you know, so you start to looking at the condition of our facilities in our parks. You know, the park building is an old house, is very, is very adaptable. As you could probably, if you've really been in it, there's not a space that's wasted. Some of it's used in really multiple ways. So, so kudos to the village for really keeping to adapt and do the best they can. Because quite often you get, you know, you get, you know, what's left sometimes in village funding. Because I, I mean, I've been there, I've been at the table, with the place and the fire and the electric and water. And I know, you know, really infrastructure and roads and all that stuff are important. I'm, I'm just going to pledge that it's, it should be time to really focus on condition of the parks, really within Antioch. Because if you go to Tim Osmond Park, and it's a beautiful park, it's, it's one of the best ones. Probably Allegheny, Tim Osmond in Lake County are the two best, if not, I mean, Whaquie and Sports Park. They're, I mean, they're glorious places. You look at the condition of turf grass on the fields, the Tim Osmond Park, and then you go to our parks and you'll see a really distinct difference. So things like funding for broadleaf weed control is really important. Some of your parks, fifty percent broadleaf weeds. So that, that really hinders playability. And you'll get to see the day and the light, or the flowers, as the kids call, you know, each year. But I would recommend, you know, really considering putting some funding into those kind of things. So you have your big capital items, playgrounds, tennis courts, parking lots and so forth. And then you have your annual maintenance requirements, fixes. The other part that was very noticeable to me was basically providing additional, you know, basic access for ADA for all the components within the park itself. And that's something that many agencies are still catching up on. You know, I mean, I've been part of developing ADA transition plans, they're not like an overnight thing. You can't do overnight because sometimes you'll wait to replace a playground, put in that sidewalk and grant going to the playground. And that's okay, as long as you have an initiative, as long as you've dedicated some type of funding towards it. You know, that, that's a major commitment I would recommend making as well. So it's a mixed bag of great stuff as far as really inventory of what's here in Antioch, the diversity within the amenities, but also the challenge of fixing them up. And I, I, you know, basically will say, because I, you know, the next thing I want to talk about is kind of looking at the structure and the breakdown with the Parks and Recreation Staff. I'm going to pledge to you, and I've pledged to Jim and Jeff a lot, that your next director needs to have an eye on knowing what fescue grass is and green and basic bluegrass is, basically versus day blinds. And that might sound simplistic, but a lot of people don't have an eye for that. So when you have somebody out in the parks and being able to recognize broadleaf weed control, all zones for swing sets, which are twice as big as the swing sets themselves, things like that. I think the expertise and the knowledge and perspective is going to help propel what needs to be done as far as the conditions. You can't run a Parks and Recreation Department from a desk. And I, I just need to pledge, so I hope your next one is not a desk, I, I, you know, like a desk person.
Yeah, I got a question. In all the staff meeting that you have in parks, what are you doing about the Heron Hardaway?
Nothing right now.
Exactly. We bought that property, why, why are you forgetting about all the residents over there? You, you want the kids to play at fifty-nine? We bought the property. Don't those residents deserve some thought process instead of thinking about what type of grass?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But you're not doing anything. You haven't, you haven't even thought about dropping trees down, no staff meetings, no nothing. I've been, hold on. I, I, I've been talking about this ever since I've been a trustee. And we don't even have a cleanup process to get trees down to let people, even a path to go through, to let people come into town. It's just, it's just a, it's a forgotten process. I just asked to bring it up in staff meetings. What can we do instead of putting stuff in, to Osmond Parks, it's to Osmond Parks, there's to Osmond Park.
I know.
No, no Heron Park. So I just asked you to bring some attention to that.
Absolutely. And so Jeff's defense, and Jeff, Jeff with a G, will probably tell, you know, how in the last six months, what our tensions may have been as far as projects. We're sidetracked by personnel things almost like on a daily basis. But I'll let Jeff, you're more involved, and so I'll let the administrator explain a little bit, you know, where we are. But believe me, I drive by that every morning too, and I'm like, we need to plan for this. I don't.
I just don't want it to be forgotten.
Yeah, absolutely, trustee. And your point is well received, and I know it's, it's been an issue that the board has discussed a number of times. And as we work through the budgeting process and the capital side of things, it's certainly, certainly something that we would welcome feedback in and put on. I would, I would just like to point out that when we brought Mr. Nahila in, we had a very limited timeframe, about six months knowing his availability. And a rare opportunity for a town our size to have somebody with his, his breadth of experience. A community like ours typically in a normal arrangement, somebody with forty, forty years' worth of parks, executive management, and the credentials he comes with would likely be unattainable. So we really had to prioritize what we wanted to work on. And really it was to provide a six-month assessment of state of our parks, the condition of our parks and the state of our Parks Department, provide some recommendations. Really wasn't focused on a lot of the capital planning that, that falls down more to me and the administrative team to come up with a capital plan that will execute the board's objectives and desires and the vision for the communities. That is something that we will work on and that falls on me. It wasn't anything that would, that Mr. Nahila was asked or tasked to work on, but.
No, I just pointed out before he thinks to add up or anything, his knowledge would be, I mean, to put, put an idea together where that would be.
Absolutely. One thing that I just thought of now is when we were going through the Ozland grant process, for me, this Heron property, this Heron Park is one of the top priorities, that and, you know, maybe the paths in Springer Park that are a complete mess. But we considered with the grant writer and what was the company that did the paperwork?
Hitchcock.
Hitchcock. You know, my first look was let's look at this park and see if we can get an Ozland grant for that property. And they said that the, whatever their checklist was, it was a very slim chance of getting it there. But Centennial would qualify and we obviously got it. But believe me, I am completely dedicated to making sure that that's high enough areas. So even if it's as much as putting in a crushed gravel path to get people to town, that would be helpful. And I'm not hanging my hat up totally yet, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not far away.
You're expertise for that part.
Okay, well, I'd love to provide it. Thank you. Yeah, so I don't want to beat a dead horse, but you know, you know, one of the things I really, you know, put in yellow here is development of the CIP plan. So I, I was getting to that. But, but frankly, it didn't involve, you know, parks that aren't developed at this point. But I just wanted to point out some other things that could be done. You know, lower hanging fruit signs at Mary's Park, there's no signs of Mary's Park, nobody knows who owns that park. Somebody called the office when I first started and said, hey, can you check out the weeds at Mary, Mary's Park? I didn't know where it was.
Mary's Park, the one in Springer that you can't get into because of the weeds are so bad?
Yeah.
Also.
So, you know, those are, you know, things, and if you start looking at your signage, you know, some of the uniformity and branding, there's a good opportunity to get that identity for the Parks and Recreation Department through your signage, because a lot of the signs are different. William Sparks sign is kind of aging and still has listing the things that aren't necessarily there anymore. So, you know, those are kind of things that you can actually achieve without spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, some of the stuff like the smaller playground repairs and swings and so forth, the fall zones, those are things that are relatively really inexpensive. So you can actually start working towards those things as well. And I know Dennis and I have talked about being able to, with a swing set in, 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 to, you know, I mean, it's a big thing, you know? It's not like a multi-use composite play structure, but it's something new. So, you know, those are really inexpensive things to actually show positive movement within parks. So I just wanted to kind of lead off with the parks and I'll kind of go over a few other things real quick, you know, if I may. You know, we, you know, we set the stage and we set the rules for Sequoia Creek Park this fall, so those are all done now. And we've had a lot of discussion and put the signs out. I think people are like a way, you know, kind of following the rules from around. You know, I'm, I'm, it's a process for education. We talked about the best site for pickleball courts. I still think if you had dedicated pickleball courts, Tim Osmond Park would be the best place to put them. Because the sound and parking and really amenities. The good news is when you renovate the Centennial, basic tennis courts, you can line those for pickleball courts too. So you've kind of worked in that direction as well. We talked about the new Ozland grant, we, you know, we recently hired a new admin assistant. We were down to two people for about six weeks at Parks and Recreation Department. So we kind of made it through the holiday season with, you know, many Santas, things going on, but that's all good now. We did a CMA, competitive market analysis, we call that, we did one for preschool and one for the picnic shelters. And that's something you should probably do on a yearly basis. Just basically measuring your own prices and fees versus other comparables. You try to find the apples-to-apples things, sometimes it's kind of hard, but at the same time, it gives you an idea of what the market bears and what you should be charging or, or could be charging. Picnic shelters, I'm glad to say you're right on cue, there's no need to actually talk about changing those. Preschool is a dramatic difference as far as what we charge versus some kind of local competitors within private and the public world. So those are things that we'll bring to the parks, you know, really the Parks Commission next week to really discuss, look at. I'm sure it's going to come to you shortly thereafter. Some of the things are housekeeping items, you know, the scout house is a popular thing. We have a lot more troops there as far as we know. Trying to really look at kind of the joint use agreement, make sure there's clarity amongst who uses it and when, to, to avoid some instances that we've had where people are coming in and the other users' time zones and creating a little bit of panic and havoc. So we're working on that. I think I'm about at the tail end and drafting a, and the joint use agreement with us and all the scout troops. Because I, I, I think that's important. Wherever we go with this, it's still going to be important that we know who's in there and when. We don't necessarily know all that right now. And then the map and the brochure will actually have the correct addresses for the maps. So you can actually find them on Google the next, on the next production. So that, you know, those are kind of housekeeping things, but at the same time. First, first thing I did when I went, went around to the parks and do the assessments, I was using our guide finding the parks, and they weren't necessarily all accurate. So Ross, Ross Minsky from the GIS department here helped me create a, you know, kind of a thing. That's important for visitors as well, not just for us. We all know, you know, how to get to Tim Osmond Park or, or Osmond Park, you know, the difference. But certain people might not know that. And then the other thing that we talked about, or I kind of talked about with Jeff and Jim, and I discovered throughout the time that I was here, especially kind of on a seasonal basis, when we get into the late summer and the fall, and then the winter season, we had a lot of contractual programs. And, you know, a lot of those are gone through, you know, private entities that we get a cut from, they run really the classes, we help promote it, we do the registration, we show, you know, really so forth. But, you know, but really the issue is if we're picking the right classes, if the provider is offering the right classes, and if our populace can actually support what we need for a minimum for each of those classes. You need a minimum for that company to run that class for, for them to be profitable as well. We're canceling a lot of our classes, and I and Jim's going to talk about this, but that was one thing that really kind of clears out to you. Because when you set up and you offer a hundred programs and you cancel sixty of them, it's not just putting like a hundred programs right in the book, hoping that all class is full. I feel because if they don't, then you're on the phone, and then you're moving kids around and talking to different agencies, you know, to see if you can combine and so forth. And it's logistically, it's very challenging, but it's more so time consuming. And that was the one thing I saw. And it's not just really Antioch, there's a lot of different places that struggle through this. So I'm going to let kind of Jim take over now as far as the, basically the dialogue that we've had with the neighbors. Actually, one question. Sure. So last year, last two years, we went through this whole Parks Master Plan. Yeah. I'm sure you've probably seen it. Yeah. Between now and maybe, you know, I think you're here till the end of the month for sure. Yes. Would you mind just kind of looking at that? And, you know, it was a short five-year period of a lot of money, which was not reasonable, but getting that to a point where, yeah, this could be a, a reasonable, like, you know, implementation plan time-wise or prioritize, helping us prioritize that, because I hate when we do studies and then they sit on a shelf. So I just want to make sure we're looking at that.
I already started.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been looking at that thing, it's like, wow, you know, millions and millions upfront. But the problem is if, you know, if you buy new playgrounds, the next two years, you have to replace them all again in fifteen. So you have to sequentially plan those out, so you're not buying same things really every fifteen years, you have to plan them out. So that, that was one thing I saw within the plan, because they were just going by the useful life. But you have to massage it a little bit.
Sure.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll be led.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, Jim.
Thank you, Jeff. So kind of picking up where Jeff left off there. One of the things Jeff has done is done a deep dive into how we're operating our Parks and Recreation Department, some of the, the things, inefficiencies that we have or areas that we can improve. With some of our recreation programs, one of the things Jeff kind of touched on a little bit with our hot shot and a lot of the contractor programs that we have, we have about a sixty percent cancellation rate. And every park district or park department has some sort of cancellation rate with these types of programs. Ours is much higher than the normal. And one of the things I can tell you anecdotally is the person that used to run our, our social media for the village, it would not be uncommon for me to see us promote an event or promote a, a program through the recreation area, and then somebody tags somebody else as an idea, like, oh, you should sign up. through the recreation area, and then somebody tags somebody else as an idea, like, oh, you should sign up for this. And then that person would respond by saying, oh, they're just going to cancel it anyways, and then they, they go someplace else. So it's kind of a self-fulfilling type thing, uh, when you have a cancellation rate that high. Uh, so we were looking at our park and recreation programs that we offer. Uh, another area that Jeff looked into, Camp Crand preschool. Now, we've seen declining enrollment with Camp Crand, uh, and increased competition, uh, especially, I think, one of the biggest areas we're seeing growing is school districts. Uh, now to rate thirty-four here in Antioch, thirty-three, and, uh, all the neighboring elementary school districts are increasing the preschool program, uh, opportunities that they have. A lot of it's funded by the state, and if I understand it right, it's all no cost to residents or very low cost. So that's a big competition that we're up against, uh, in addition to other private schools. You know, within a short block of Camp Crand, you have the Methodist Church and, you know, District Thirty-four, uh, all doing preschool. And then, uh, also, uh, about twenty-five percent of our current enrollment right now are non-residents. So the, the folks that are part of Camp Crand are worth a bone, are village residents.
I make one comment there too. Um, like the, again, we've never considered the potential liability of running a preschool. And I think we found out through the last, uh, process that our insurance companies don't even really know we're operating preschool, which is an issue.
Well, it was Jim and I.
And we didn't, we didn't have any, so, just the board knows that.
Well, and I'll get into a little bit more with that, Mayor, um, you know, some of the, the things that Administrator Gotchall and myself met with the Camp Crand teachers last month. Uh, it was an opportunity to get their firsthand some of the challenges and just from their perspective, what's going on there. And things like, you know, operating a preschool in two different buildings, one of the buildings has no security cameras, playground isn't fenced in, uh, they have issues where, um, you know, the kids play with Barbie dolls and they're missing arms and legs, and they don't have the proper equipment or supplies to teach, so, uh, you know, one of the things I'll touch on.
But, well, no heads. Yeah.
So, so that's, that's kind of the state of things, and we, and we have a staff of very dedicated teachers, I might add, that are despite all of this making it work there, uh, that we're grateful for. Uh, but that's kind of the state of Camp Crand. And then summer camps also, we're, we're seeing declining enrollment with that as well. So with the, kind of those facts, I had an opportunity to take a look at the financial snapshot of where we are with the Parks and Recreation Department, specifically these areas. Taking a look at the most recent, uh, fiscal year numbers that we have, I, I kind of prorated it to the end of the year. And right now, we're tracking just our Parks and Recreation Programs, which, somewhere near forty-three thousand dollars this fiscal year. Uh, Camp Crand, uh, looks like we'll lose about ten to eleven thousand dollars this fiscal year. And that does not account for any full-time staff, um, that, that runs, uh, the preschool. Uh, any of their costs that are associated with that, so this is just could be a part-time teacher cost uh, compared to what we're charging, the revenue that's coming in. And then summer camps, uh, this should be a profit center for the village. Uh, last, uh, summer, the summer of twenty-four, uh, we operated a summer camp that lost about forty-three thousand dollars. And again, that doesn't take into account any of the full-time staff and administrative costs that go along with that also. So that being said, what, what, what have we been doing? One of the first things that we did this past summer is we contracted to bring Jeff in as our interim Parks Director. And, uh, like Administrator Gotchall had mentioned, bringing in somebody of his caliber uh, was a, was a great opportunity for somebody with his years of experience to kind of take an assessment of how we're operating things and, and how we can improve our service to residents. Um, with that, uh, most recently, as you guys know, we just launched a search for a Parks and Recreation Director. A lot of this is based off of, uh, what we're looking for, based off of what Jeff sees the needs of for, uh, our department moving forward. And before all of this started, uh, we started dialogues with Lindenhurst Park District, as you guys know. Uh, we're primarily at first, uh, looking at how we could work together with Recreation Services, those, those programs that have the sixty percent cancellation rate. Uh, we figured if we team up with Lindenhurst, and they have programs that need people, we have programs that need people, and if we could work together, uh, programs that they're canceling because of lack of enrollment, the enrollment will be filled, and and then that way, our residents will be able to sign up a basketball camp or something and know with certainty that it's actually going to happen, and all you guys, uh.
Where's the camp going to be held?
Good question, and I'll, I'll get into more of this in the specifics, but.
Doing it, you already went past the slide. And when I, in those figures, I just want to touch base on those figures. Wherever the camp's going to be held, we're going to have to beef up security cameras, we're going to have to beef up everything. Those aren't true figures, let's just be honest. But wherever the camp's going to be held, we got to beef up security, no panic buttons, no security cameras. Those aren't true loss figures, we got to, we got to spend thousands of dollars to beef up to protect these children. So that's, that's, that's nonsense figures. So wherever, wherever you think with gymnasium, with, with building, you've got to make it the same criteria as a school. We're in a new world. So wherever you're going to, wherever you're going to house a child, and, and what, what gets me, and I'm going to make a speech right now, what gets me, we had a former village administrator, and I recused myself from the insurance for the simple reason, we had all the employees not protected for no insurance. We had, we had a preschool, no insurance. The village was exposed. And think of that as an accusation for someone make, someone touch my kid, exposed, the teacher and the village. Because one person didn't bother to read the policy, that's the village administrator, former village administrator. So, those figures are all wrong. So you got to beef up those figures, and wherever it's going to be held, security cameras, and whatever daytime class, I don't know how you're going to protect them with police officers. These are all, I mean, we just got, we're in a whole new world. After what, what just happened with terrorists and whatnot. We're a sandy hookaway, we're a soft target, especially with this nonsense.
It's a good segue into my next part.
Okay.
Just to make sense, thank you. So, we've been talking with Lindenhurst Park District, uh, like I mentioned about some of the recreation programs, and then that has evolved into further things, one of the things that, one of the advantages that, uh, what we're looking at offers is the opportunity to, um, remove the village, uh, from, I guess, liability or the liability we're exposed to right now by partnering with the park district that, uh, this is their full-time thing, every dollar that they levy goes towards park district things, uh, where, as Jeff alluded to, when you're a parks department, you get what's left over from the police, roads, and everything else. So, we've been, uh, talking with the Lindenhurst Park District, again, it started off with some of the recreation programs, and then it kind of evolved into a bigger picture. Um, you know, last month when we met with Camp Crand, really understanding the, if we continue Camp Crand, the, the infrastructure investments that the village is going to have to make, uh, to have facilities that are safe and, uh, programs that are worthwhile for the children, it's expensive. So, we, we came up with this framework that I'm presenting to you tonight, that, um, I'll ask for your feedback at the end, and we'll kind of wrap it up, but it basically starts off with beginning this May, uh, Lindenhurst will start to run our recreation programs. So what that would, uh, mean is, uh, Antioch residents, if you want basketball camps, or if you want whatever sort of camps that they offer, you'd sign up through them. Uh, it would be hosted either at their facility, or we, uh, make arrangements for, you know, we have our parks building, which has some cameras, but, um, we also have the senior center building, which has plenty of space. Uh, so that, that would start in May, so they would take that over. Uh, village residents would get better programming, um, and, and a, a better process, that, that sort of thing. Uh, Lindenhurst would take care of the marketing, they would outreach to residents. Moving forward, they were to handle all the, the brochures and the analogs and all that stuff that gets mailed out. So that's how the, um, that will start. One thing to note, the village will still operate our pool. Uh, that'll be something that we'll still own, we'll operate, uh, we'll get in charge of the pool staff out there. We'll do swim lessons, Lindenhurst residents will have an opportunity, and we'll, we'll figure out the details once we get past the conceptual framework, but, uh, we'll either have some sort of cured, uh, sale of pool passes, or uh, something along those lines where residents for Antioch get first dibs, and they might get, um, Lindenhurst might get dibs before non-residents, or something like that, if we evolve to that point. But honestly, at this point, um, would be at the capacity where we could open it all at once. Uh, so that, that would be the first phase, starting in May. And then the second phase would start this September, where they would take over Camp Crand. And so this first year, what they would do is, our teachers would become Lindenhurst Park, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, or Park District employees. And, and Lindenhurst would operate Camp Crand out of our parks building. Uh, they would not operate it out of the, um, scout house. And so what that would mean is we'd run two of the age levels out of the Camp Crand here, and then they'd offer additional services at their Lindenhurst Park facility, um, on grass, deep like grassy, grassy, grassy grove. Um, so that, by the way, is in closer proximity, if you live on the east side of town. It's a lot easier to get those in there than it is to your current facility. So that would begin in September, so they, and, and beginning with that also, Lindenhurst Park District would take over all the camps. So the winter camp, spring break camp, next spring, and then the summer camp of twenty-twenty-six. And then the final phase of this would be next May, where Lindenhurst, our district, uh, assumes full operation of our camps and all programming, except for village-related things, and we'll still have concerts, we'll still have Magic Day at Sequoia Creek Park. We'll still do concerts there, we'll still do other programming local. Uh, but they'll do Daddy Goner Dance, they'll do some other things, other programming events like that. Uh, and then they'll just, um, kind of take over the recreation, uh, operations for the village. So in summary, this isn't really a cost-cutting program, although we expect to realize cost savings. Um, this is an opportunity to expand services to our residents substantially, uh, without increasing the burden on our taxpayers. Uh, this is a great way to maximize the, the leverage, the relationship between us and the Lindenhurst Park District. Um, I, I see both sides, uh, coming ahead on this. Uh, the village is going to be able to focus, and a lot of what Jeff talked about, will be able to focus on things like improving our parks. Um, whether it's money or staff resources, our focus is going to be on, on park maintenance, uh, development, that sort of thing, and that's really what our new Parks Director is, is, is going to be focused on moving forward once we go through this transition. Uh, this is a great way to introduce residents of the Lindenhurst Park District to amenities in Antioch, some of our parks in the summertime, doing summer camp up here, and, um, using our pool among other things. Uh, so, it's just some of the benefits. And then finally, our, our next steps. So tonight, I'd love some feedback, thoughts, opinions, um, whatever, whatever feedback you guys have. We'll also, based on your feedback tonight, we'll update, uh, Parks and Recreation Department staff. Um, we'll discuss with Lindenhurst, um, how to formally move forward with this, drafting a, uh, intergovernmental agreement to move forward. Um, and then, um, you know, we'll draft something, uh, for you guys to look at, we'll go over it with Lindenhurst. And then we'll, uh, collaborate together. One of the things I, I really like about working with Lindenhurst, their executive directors, really big on clear messaging to residents, stakeholders, and staff. Uh, so they, they have a full communications department there, so they'll work with us and Kelly, uh, to make sure our residents and all the stakeholders involved with this know exactly what's going on, throughout the entire process. Uh, they have a little bit of communications, uh, strategy there, so nice to, to team up with them on that. So that, that's kind of the next step, so, um, from there, the, I'll turn it back to you guys.
One quick clarification, Jim. Um, you just, I don't know if it was in the one slide, but, um, what is the, uh, cost benefit to our residents for like a Lindenhurst program? And, um, how will Lindenhurst get money from us so people know it's not going to be their tax bill?
So, we're, right now, we're, we're working on, you know, once we get past the concept, then we'll work on some sort of fee structure. You know, the, the, the preliminary, you know, talking with them, the first year might be like a seventy-five thousand dollar something in that neighborhood. Uh, we don't have specifics, uh, and I don't, I don't want to really get too much into the, the, that part of it right now. But conceptually, if, you know, once we get that hammered out, we'll figure out the dollar amounts, and then from there, we'll get, demonstrate more precisely what kind of, uh, you know, gain or loss.
I guess I'm trying to say it's, it's not going to be like a lineup on, on their tax bill. The village is going to write a check to Lindenhurst Park District with money that we already collect in our taxes, and then give residents the Lindenhurst, our Antioch residents who get the Lindenhurst resident rate for these programs is what we're trying to get to, right?
Correct, and that, that's part of the design of, of that fee structure, Mayor, is in conversation with Lindenhurst Park District, understanding that their taxing body is supporting the lion's share of their operations, to allow our residents to have Lindenhurst Park District resident pricing to keep their costs down. There was a request for a contribution to the park district, help subsidize some of those costs, and increase the marketing budget, so they can use our reach into our community as well. And they have made, made some, some rather broad commitments to try to operate some of the programming from Danny Antioch. Um, you know, to Jeff, to Gil's point, if we can get our, our condition of our visible park facilities up to park district standards, I think we'll be more than happy to operate some of the sports and recreational services within Antioch, as long as we have the facilities to do so.
And, and at our parks now, is it mostly, um, private club programs, is that what's using most of like the, mostly Antioch Little League, Viking?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll shut up, questions? Scott? We're happy.
Uh, it's just, I, I'm trying to formulate how I'm going to say this, um. When, I think it's a, a good idea to work with Lindenhurst to kind of get its energy, because they fill program, we fill program, everybody gets the full program. Uh, I'm concerned about, first of all, I keep hearing residents get priority, not, uh, non-residents will have to wait. My, one of the biggest complaints we always hear is, is the, the non-residents, the six oh oh two non-residents get shoved to the side when it comes time to sign up for things, and they on some things, they get a cut on the things and other things, it was always my impression we're, that we had reached an agreement with the township, that six oh oh two as a whole would be the same cost. So if we're going to go forward with this, I think we need to have the township involved with this also, so that their residents are represented, because it sounds like we're going to kind of cut them out, just be Lindenhurst in the village of Antioch. And that's going to become a sticky point. Of community.
Um, I think I'd have best addressed that question for Steve. Um, it, it certainly isn't about cutting anybody out. Um, I thi, I think, um, part of the question that would need to be, thanks to be answered is how would we structure, structure such an agreement? Obviously, any payments that the village would be making towards Lindenhurst Park District to offset some of these costs are costs that would be funded by village tax dollars. Um, I think the township certainly would have an opportunity, if they wish to pursue it, to, um, to join such an initiative, I think that would align, uh, pretty well with Lindenhurst Park District's long-term goals for their district. Um, they certainly have the capacity to, um, draw a broader resident base into the services that they're offering. But the, the, uh, unincorporated residents certainly wouldn't be excluded from any of the offerings of Lindenhurst Park District, they are currently able to participate in any of the programs that they have. Uh, there is a, a very modest cost differential that they currently establish for resident versus non-resident of the taxing park district taxing body currently. Antioch resident can probably go there, and it's different, like, medical numbers, don't pull me on this. It's not too far off, but a, 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 Lindenhurst Park, Lindenhurst Park District goes to register for a program, say it's sixty dollars. It may cost sixty-six for a non-resident, so we're not talking, just for fantasy, where it would be sixty dollars for our resident as a, as a partner member of the Lindenhurst Park District development, it would be a hundred and twenty for a township, but we're not talking that large of an offset of, of a differential at all. It's a modest differential, and again, it just comes down to the same rationale of why they charge non-residents more, because it's their taxing body that's supporting those operations. The logic, I think, would hold true for us, though it'd be our village tax dollars paid by our village businesses and businesses that would be offsetting the services and allowing those, those in resident, those resident rates for our residents to participate.
And I, and I understand that, I just think we need to give the township or government the opportunity to board the train.
Certainly.
If, if, you know, tell them this is the train we're getting on, and you want on or not. I, because I don't want to pay for the township residents, but I'd If, if, you know, tell them this is the train we're getting on and you want on or not. I, and I don't want to pay for the township residents, but I, I want to make sure they're not interested. Uh, I've got two other points I want to make. The other, um, the, the, the second point I want to make is about Camp Crayon and the summer camps. And, and the cost loss there. To me, they've always been like a third veil. You don't touch them because everybody loves them, they want them, they think they're great. Uh, uh, and I think they're great too. Uh, but I've got grandkids that go to preschool. My ki- my kids are paying, um, like a house payment for, for them to go to, go to preschool. It's like, I, I, I'm gagging myself to see what they have to pay for them to go to preschool. And, and we're giving it away. I mean, we're, we're literally giving it away. So we have to, if we're doing stuff, we have to make sure the, the, the cost analysis you talked about earlier. Is a true cost analysis. And, and then that goes to, trust me, Macy's point, this is a new age. We have to make sure that the safety and security is covered. A lot of the things we do here with the parks is laissez faire. Okay, it's been that way for fifty years. It's, it's going to change it. So we need to start, we need to figure it out because we can't just assume that things are just going to be safe and unkeyed or in kosher. Because there, there's too many people out there to figure out how to make it unsafe and unkeyed or.
A hundred percent I could agree with you more until you hope your, and trust me, Macy's points on safety is, um, that was probably the primary concern that teachers raised. You know, they, they have the operational concerns, right? The, um, the funding and making sure some of the equipment and many of these with the classroom, right? But one of their biggest concerns was the ability to keep the classroom safe and concern. Certainly in today's world, that has to be one of our priorities. And these figures that are being, um, quoted by Assistant Minister Moran relevant to the losses. And some of the figures that are being incorporated by, uh, Mr. Nahila relative to potential tuition increases to help offset some of those costs. Even with those increases, we're not, we would not bring, bring ourselves to a, a cost neutral perspective. Um, the cost increases that would be necessary to get there would have to be incremental over a number of years to balance that out. But again, that's not taking into account at this point the capital improvements and investments that those would have to make into the classroom facilities themselves to meet modern standards.
And, and don't, don't get me wrong, having a functional park system is like having a functional mail system, like having a functional library. Like having a functional public works. Our taxpayers pay tax dollars towards that to make it happen. And some, some of the programs may lose money, some may make money. Um, the, the, but we try to make it a fair balance for the taxpayers and for the users. So I, I, I get that some things may have a loss, some things may not. But just because we shifted to Lindenhurst. Doesn't mean we can avoid some things such as safety and security. Hundred percent. There's always going to be some involved with that.
Um, you know, it really, it's really about prioritizing, um, and, and putting our focus, I think, where, um, where whatever the board's vision is, making that focus there. Focus is improving our parks, our park facilities themselves and the things that we offer within those parks. And that's going to require dollars to go to those, right? Make those part improvements and ju- address some of those things that are probably, that can't have been kicked too far down the road somewhere. Right? So it's, it's evaluating whether or not that's our priority or continuing to operate. The preschool is the priority, right? If there's only so many dollars in the dance pocket, we gotta shift them to whatever the board's priority is. That's what we're seeing from, from respectfully. Tell us what priority the board is and then kind of which direction we should go based on information.
I mean, it's just funny what happened in this discussion tonight because the other night I'm at a meeting and somebody showed me the video of Springer Park. Now they can't get their, they can't even walk down the path because it's so overgrown, you know? So we, you're right, we have to come up with a balance. But no other people wants to.
Rusty Peterson, then Rusty.
I, I just want to address the, the Camp Crayon. Um, when, you know, twenty-five years ago, when my kids were in it. It wasn't a preschool. It was camp. And they didn't have certified teachers. It was run like a little preschool, but it wasn't considered that because they didn't have certified teachers. It didn't cost an arm and a leg to have it. Um, it was at the Scout House when it was the old location. Times have changed. I don't know, um, if we have certified teachers over there now. Um, are they certified?
Uh, I don't think.
I, I don't, I don't either. So that's why it's not as expensive as, say, a kinder care. That has, you know, it's, it's like a house payment when you put, when you put your kids in kinder care. And it's, and they're all certified teachers. So, um, it, it, you get what you pay for, I guess. So we never really. The village never really wanted to call it a preschool because it was Camp Crayon for that reason. It wasn't, you know, Crayon School. And, 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 and they, they made that very, very clear when we signed our kids up years ago. I, I did, I haven't signed my grandchildren up, so I have no idea, you know, what they're actually calling it. But, uh, that's why there was this disparity, uh, differences in, in prices with a real preschool. That's, that's.
And one other side to that is, okay, my kids, the kids I've signed up have been, are ten, fourteen and sixteen. And even when I was signing them up, we had to get there at six in the morning in line to try and get a slot in the, in the class. And I don't think that's really a thing anymore, right? Just pretty much open anywhere. Yeah.
Yeah, I actually was a kid in this school year and there was concerns that we weren't going to fill some of our classes and some of them may not cancel due to the lack of involvement. Um, or something we're able to meet that threshold and operate. But again, we continue to see that defining involvement is taking place. Um, you know, I guess I'm, I'm one of those that's a firm believer that if we're going to do something, people should want to come to us because they're the best at it. And not necessarily because we've achieved.
Does he put there?
All right, a couple of points. Um, first is, along with all this, we have to have a very detailed communications plan to our residents. Which I think needs to include town halls, multiple. We need to inform them of what we're thinking of doing here before we jump into it full, full bore. Um, I think back to when we, we relinquished the senior services over to the township and all the confusion that was. And all the social media posts and everything else. This is going to be a hundred times worse. Cause there's a lot of people that are, I think this means something that it doesn't. There's, you know, they're not going to see the benefits over, you know, the, now they're going to drive to Lindenhurst. There's going to be a lot of questions. And I think we need to make sure that as we move forward on this, that we develop a very detailed plan and that we get ahead of all these issues. There should be a section on our webpage. There should be information out there that details strictly with what we're doing, the various steps. And as we get it approved, that that dictates everyone, what, what we're doing, when we're doing it and why we're doing it. Um, because I think there's going to be a lot of questions and concerns about it. Um, secondary is, I was wondering in your discussions with Lindenhurst Park District. Did they mention at any point, has there been any discussions about them wanting to expand their park district? I E. Create Lindenhurst Antioch Park District or something like that where they go to the voters asking for approval to take over the parks in the whole area?
Uh, certainly, you know, I, I wouldn't even attempt to try to speak for the park district. Um, I, I can tell you that they did convey that, you know, part of their long-term strategic plan is to try to grow the park district. Whatever that looks like and expand the offerings. Um, so we did do just a little bit of digging into what that would entail. Should that be something that the board would at one point down the road, what we will have long gone want to explore. And yes, it is a possibility. It's not too much different from if Antioch wanted to establish a own park district. Um, you, there would be a referendum involved, but prior to going, and again, attorney, if I mess this up, please correct me. But prior to us going to referendum in our, within our community, the Lindenhurst Park District would have to go to referendum to essentially say to open the door and help Antioch into their community. Um, you know, they run a pretty efficient operation. I was, I was rather shocked. They, they've got roughly a three and a half million dollar budget. Just a little bit over one million, about one million dollars of that comes from the taxing of the district itself. The others mostly fund driven. So they do, they do a pretty good job. Again, you know, it should, should be moved towards that direction one day. With the discussion, is it a benefit to us to combine resources again? And look to expand at a, a regional destination.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I, I've seen the numbers, everything we've talked about and, and all the, the reports on our condition of our current parks. We have a lot of things that we need to do. And, and programming is one of them. And if this can get our residents more programming. And, and more opportunities, that's a good thing. But I just want to make sure we really dive into this and really get out there to the residents. Make sure they're aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Yeah. And I, and I think the message is to, to stay on target with really what the objective of this entire, um, undertaking to research this was. You know, while, while, while saving a couple of bucks is, is certainly nice and everybody likes to save a little bit of money. Really the focus and the objective is when we walked into it, the direction we received from the mayor when we started exploring this was. How can we even improve and expand the services that our residents are, are getting? Cause he was looking at some of the loss of the years that we're seeing. But then also starting to answer the question, are we not running the right programs? How can we offer better programs? How can we make sure we do register kids for a program they get to go? They don't have to experience the disappointment of cancellation. You know, kind of driving a lot of this unfortunately too was the, the, uh, the destructure changes that the school district wanted. Where we used to have pre-ready early access and low-cost access to school facilities. Their costs go up too, right? They've got to try to cover their costs in operations too. So we were already had very small threshold within our programs for profit. That like, that pretty much like how, um, you throw up costs, which again leads to higher volume coverage, more cancellation risks with the constant cycle that we. Trying to find a way to get out of it. Make sure that when we tell a family, we're going to have a basketball camp, we have a basketball camp.
Sure. Thank you. Rusty, can you?
Uh, when you're working out this agreement with Lindenhurst, what is the duration for the agreement? Are you thinking this would be like an annual and then let's reassess, make sure it's working or what commitment are you?
Right now, we're talking about a three-year deal.
Okay.
So it would be, um, starting this May first and then two years and then at some point, you know, the language will come up with, there's an opportunity to assess. Um, you know, obviously we don't want to wait three years if they're issuing right away, but, um, they're, they're pretty adamant. They want to be flexible enough. They, they want to see this be a longer success. But the original agreement, they want, I think, a three-year deal.
The other question is, do we ever, um, hit capacity at our village pool for the kids in the summer?
We don't.
Cause that was the concern of mine. Cause I know like growing up, I would ride my bike to the pool and a lot of the kids who live in the apartments do. And I just wouldn't want the kids to miss out because of course I think it's a great partnership with Lindenhurst, but I don't want Antioch kids not to be able to use what we have right here that's accessible to them.
Yeah, and that, the pool is kind of an entirely separate discussion with Lindenhurst. We haven't really delved deeply into what that would look like. Because it is one of the amenities, right? It does have capacity limits. And we've talked if, if it was something that potentially we would pursue with them. With offering some sort of shared use, um, you know, we kind of conveyed that like probably a couple of their programs or amenities, it would have to be a priority based. Accessibility and, and, right? So Antioch residents, however we define that, would have priority basis to purchase their passes and whatnot. And then if we hit that limit and we're full of Antioch residents and passes, then we don't sell them. Right? So Antioch residents could, could first crack, purchase pool passes. And then it would open up to Lindenhurst residents ideologically before it opened up to the general public outside of like.
I'm just wondering, you know, day by day, even if we, um, give first dibs at the passes, could it still be possible that the pool is like at capacity that day? You know what I mean?
Certainly, certainly. It's, you know, dealing with the defined square footage. We have a streak of, you know, three weeks of, or five, three weather pools have become very popular, very straight. And certainly that would be something I think that would, um, something that we'd have to take into consideration, right? Along with this, with this framework, with a deal to, in discussions with the pool, I know it's open, so some broader offerings for our residents as well. Lindenhurst Park District has a community beach for, like, hard access. They have a community splash pad, not that we don't put it off. It's a little bit different type of splash pad experience. They have a building which, right off our programming that we didn't feel they had access to, right? So it's kind of a trade-off and there's, there's a lot of those like finer details that we haven't built into yet until we kind of get a vibe, a worthy board vibe for this whole. Things to work out.
My last question, I think, well, two more questions. One, Jim, would you mind emailing the PowerPoint? Two, I don't think we had it in our packet. I had a hard time reading. I was switching it. And then also, um, I think you touched on this before, but you would still try to do some offerings in the town, right? Just because they know accessibility for some reasons.
Like the village, or?
Well, they, using our parks, they're saying?
Yeah, like using our parks or if we are able to use the senior center for something, just so not everything is located in Lindenhurst.
No, you know, they, they, they want to have a presence here. So, so, so I think they want right of first refusal for the senior center building. Something along those lines where they could use that here program and put up here. Well, one of the, the things that they've talked about possibly expanding up here is if you have a four and after school program. That someone understands is real successful down there. Uh, they would like to expand it up this way potentially. Um, you know, that, that would be covered in physical, as I said, with the town.
And Rebecca, I just, as we went through the, like, the legal agreement, the first draft or looked at some of the terms. I think one of the things I said, you know, maybe we could have something that, that no less than twenty percent of their programs will take place on our facility. I mean, they're, I'm not saying they agree to that, but you know, maybe something along those lines where there's a minimum of, you know, uh, using our parks.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure there's some sort of presence for those who have a hard time getting their kids.
I think they see that as an advantage to, they have more opportunity to be more, we have an opportunity to bring outside people into our parks and kind of show up our town.
That's one of my questions.
Anybody else? All right. Anything thrown at you? So that's good. So, um, what's the next step with talking to their, obviously their board is discussing?
I'll, I'll take it. Um, so our next step, first of all, tomorrow we'll talk to staff. Uh, let them know that we're going down this gap with the, with Lindenhurst. That we can't promise anything that'll come of that, but we'll, we'll be transparent with them. So they know we're, we're, we'll continue talking with Lindenhurst. Um, I, I imagine sooner than later we'll draft up a, some sort of I G A or, or an agreement. Um, you have them looking at it. They, they had a board meeting last night. Um, so their next board meeting is the day before our first February meeting. So, um, I, I think they, if we have some sort of framework in place that I talk about it at that meeting. Uh, the, the end result is hopefully by March, we'll have a, an agreement that both sides are happy with, um, before you guys.
Can you do me one other favor? Can you, when you talk to Dave or whoever, can you get a, a price for the village of Antioch? And then the price if it extended to all of six years, all the, all zip code?
Sure.
Yeah. So it was like, say it's seventy-five thousand for just Antioch, but if it was both, it was one twenty-five. So at least maybe we could have that conversation with Tom.
Sure. Now, I actually have a, a meeting scheduled with him on some related but unrelated parks matters. Yes. Um, I believe it's next week. So I will broach the subject with him and kind of engage him first at the township level if they'd like to become part of this arrangement in some fashion.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the, uh, research and hard work on that. All right. So, um, next on the, the hall is couple text amendments, um. Relate some cleanup. Uh, the first one is discussion regarding text amendments to the village zoning ordinance, title ten, creating a section ten, dash five, dash fourteen. Establishing regulations related to residential and commercial lighting.
Howard Rogers. So, hey, so this will be my first, uh, text amendment discussion, you know, starting as a new employee. This was something that was being worked on behind the scenes for a while. So I felt like it was important to eventually bring it up for, you know, consideration by the village board to vote on it. The issue at stake is that this deals with the lighting ordinance, but it deals with, uh, enforcement on existing older developments. We're talking about all the buildings, parking lots and what have you. There's a section on the zoning code that talks about lighting for like new development, like site plan review. This is a gap to, to do retroactive enforcement. Now, I can go into details about what is being enforced, but I just wanted to give you a broad, broad synopsis here. But this is for enforcement eventually of like different properties. So this naturally deals with residential, commercial, institutional, industrial areas. And then what is, the ordinance itself is broken up into eight parts, sections. The first one is the definitions. It's always good to have a definition section. The lighting standards is number two. Number three is the regulations. Number four is illumination levels. That's very important for enforcement. Number five is uses. Six is exemptions and temporary uses. Number seven and eight, you, you're highlighted in red because those were some of the changes that came about in the, uh, planning and zoning review process. So number seven is inspection. Number eight is lighting variances. So if a person wants to contest or apply for a variance, they can. Now, before I jump into the, to the ordinance itself, I just wanted to just speak a little bit about the, uh. About the enforcement itself. So, um. So it comes down to this. So it comes down to this. And this is on page three, letter G. All outdoor lighting fixtures lawfully installed prior to operable on the effective date. Of this ordinance, right, will be exempt. So we're not asking people right off the bat, you have to change everything. There are two criteria, right? First one is the existing outdoor lighting fixture being replaced or moved or reinstalled. Then I could, you know, jump into this and be like, look, we have a a minimum standard for lighting for a parking lot. Or for a display area or what have you. Then the second one is a existing outdoor lighting systems that are determined to be a nuisance to adjoining. Owners, occupants, or create a traffic hazard issue. So it's not like, well, we're gonna wait until you guys change everything to enforce. It could be enforceable on this. What I'm trying to say is, we're not here to make everybody comply with the night. And I I just want to make everyone assured, you know, rest assured that this is not the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to have some legal teeth into enforcing it. And to have some standards. Now, I could go into greater details, but I'll stop for a moment. Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance or the reason for it? Or any particular sections?
Assistant Peterson.
I I I understand this as. This is going to. Give our code enforcement officer teeth. That if he has to go knock on a door and someone's complaining about their lights being too bright, it's like daylight.
Yes.
This gives us the ability to go in there and tell them, you're not compliant. You need to change your lighting, we're gonna give you three months to do it.
Right, it's not like we're here to give a fine and make them pay the fine. The the idea is to eventually change the behavior to reduce the lighting uh nuisance that we may have here. To preserve some of the dark night aspects of the environment, so that's the 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 uh idea.
Okay, that's all I want. I just wanted to clarify.
I have, I just have a question. You got some lights? Use Walmart as an example.
Yes.
Those tall lights, not saying they're not compliant. A business like that with those lights, ten thousand dollar light poles. You're gonna go to a business saying. Those are no good.
No.
They're twenty years old, th- th- those weren't compliant then, they're not, they're not compliant now, change them out and rent.
So what typically happens is. Most businesses will do a parking lot renovation, they're gonna apply for a building permit. Either they're gonna recode, reseal, or redo the lighting. That's when I do the enforcement, like what's that?
You just said reseal, you gotta get a reseal permit, if that's what you're.
Typically, those are the type of permits that are being applied.
Like an asphalt reseal, you're you're proposing that? I'm losing, I'm losing concept, so if I if I re, I just did asphalt resealing. You're proposing everybody's gotta get a permit for an asphalt reseal?
So so typically under commercial developments, commercial, if you're doing some type of resealment. Recoding, restriping, that gets reviewed under building and zoning. Now, I might say, I'm not up to speed on your building part of it. I'm planning and zoning, and I understand building. For residential, no, but for commercial, yes. Because in commercial, sometimes you're gonna reconfigure the parking lot, they're gonna add new landscaping, you might do the lighting, you might do the driveway differently. Or you might add more handicap parking for accessibility.
Probably been if for just to reseal. Not changed, it was people did it. I'm gonna state the Anastasia's, Anastasia's, I'll just use the Anastasia's. They re, they they recode it with uh the ceilings and and. Didn't have to get a permit on that.
No, and I and I think we have to allow uh Director Pari an opportunity to become a player with our code.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we don't intend to change the building permit requirements.
Right, 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 right.
Ceiling, whatever's currently in existence is not gonna be affected.
Okay, that's what that's my.
Right, but however, if a if a person is expanding their parking lot.
Then I get it, then I get it.
Some municipalities that I've worked, like I've said, large or small, have those requirements for building permit review. Just to make sure, twenty parking spaces are gonna reappear after you're redone.
No, I get that.
Because for parking, for parking analysis, right, it needs to comply with the ADA responsibility and also for parking, so there's not people parking elsewhere.
Then I get it.
Any other thing to just?
This might be a silly question, I don't know, but I was reading about uplighting being prohibited, and maybe I don't understand, but I know. If you're thinking about uplighting within my yard for residents to highlight a tree, so are we not allowed? Is that the idea of this or am I not understanding?
So the the idea about the uplighting is to put some type of a shield, so light is not being dispersed. It's shielding, and this is what I go to go look at it on a commercial standpoint. Yeah, yeah, commercial dealerships. Your auto dealerships, right? They're gonna illuminate like there's no tomorrow because they wanna protect their investment, the cars that are sitting in the parking lot, the security. Now, that light is being spilled onto the road, let's say one seventy three. That's what we're trying to curb. The light trespass past the property line into the public right away. Now, are we gonna go on the path of residential? No, not necessarily, in the sense that, you know, we're gonna look at it and I'm gonna enforce it. In a gradual man manner, and I don't know if we're taking into consideration different criteria. But but the language here deals with floodlights, just illuminating everything. That's that's what we're trying to curb.
And that's residential also?
Like I said, residential, commercial.
My light in my house was thirty years old, and I go, oof. Just bought a a nice light at Costco for nineteen ninety nine, I think, I think I'm in trouble.
But like I said, this isn't, like I read before I burned down. Before the adoption is allowed, is there's a complaint, then I'll deal with it on a complaint basis. I'm not gonna be going out there like tagging everybody with it. Because the intent of the ordinance is to give people some relief in the sense that, hey, I've complied in the past, and I'm not complying today. You know, I should be compliant, it's like a noncomplaining, but for lighting. The idea is down the road, and this is where I'm gonna be very involved, for new developments to start complying with these requirements. So we start having some semblance of of adhering to the ordinance. While also working with older buildings, older properties. That, you know, they're applying for a grant program, right, they're redoing the facade. This is a good opportunity to say, well, use that light to reduce the lighting, stuff like that.
Any other questions about this? So then we'll move this to the next uh order meeting. Any discussion? Send your questions out, yeah.
Can I hit some of the the sure, good points here? So I don't have people short on my presentation. So definitions is pretty straightforward. The reason why we have definitions, because if we get contested in a legal purpose, we could say, well, this is our definition of a foot candle or what have you. So that's the reason why ordinance does have definition under zoning, instead of using Merriam-Webster's dictionary, which could be very broad. The second section deals with the lighting standards, right? And that deals like like letter C, like what you were explaining, you were asking them uplighting. Except for American plans, you know, there's gonna be special consideration. Now, not everybody who has uplighting is creating a lot of lumens. They're not doing a lot of lighting dispersment. So again, it's gonna be consideration, it's gonna be looking at the site on a particular basis. Another thing is floodlighting is discouraged. A lot of people want to like add two floodlights from the building, or from, let's say, an electrical pole, and say, that's my lighting for the parking lot, for the building, everything. This is where we're gonna start to, we as a municipality, we're gonna str- try to narrow down, to not have that type of development. Typically, you see it in like, you know, retail stores, let's say a liquor store, they have two floodlights on the building, it illuminates everything. And it illuminates onto the neighbor's property, residential, or the public right away. So uh nonessential lighting will be turned off after a certain hour of the night to reduce the, you know, lighting. Again, there are exceptions like for our dealership. Under this ordinance, it gives me the flexibility to work on it and to allow for an allowance. Other things, maximum lighting fixture, the height, I think that's very important. Twenty five feet of height, so now we're starting to regulate the height of light fixture. What what happens most often, persons develop develops a parking lot, they wanna put fewer lighting uh lighting apparatus, right? Light fixtures, light light poles, so they're gonna go with fewer but taller, which disperses more light. Ideas have more and more sho- shown in the area that needs to be concentrated with shielding in place. And keep it at ninety degrees. So that's section two, key highlights. Section three is regulation, I think this is good to point out. Lighting cannot surpass more than half a foot candle on properties that are either residential or commercial. We don't want light residents. Light should be should be on the property, it shouldn't be going over. Let's see what else from section three. Naturally, no lights that blink, flashing, rotating, or fluttering. Like, you know, something that's important. Uh, no reflector penalty, because that's for, you know, traffic hazard, an issue. Off street parking lots, one foot candle, the area of the areas to use. In other words, reduce the parking lights, that's what it's trying to say here. Light fixtures that are either on poles, platform, pedestal. Should be turned off at eleven P M, right, we shouldn't have lights all night. Um, let's see. I already explained the existing lighting fixture, you know, being replaced, removed, or made slow. Number four is the light levels themselves, so there's different standards for measuring it. Now, um, what I wanna, what I wanna speak about is this. Again, property lines have a can a foot candle. This is this, you guys know what a foot candle is? So what a foot candle is, and I could pass this along, I have a visual, it's like if you're holding a candle. One foot away by one foot by one foot off, that's that's a foot candle. So half of that candle could only be on to the property. Now, what I did for this discussion, I gave examples of foot candles. Don't look at lugs, because that's a different way of measuring a foot candle. Because the ordinance talks about, well, you know, the foot candle will not exceed twenty for a gas canopy, right, underneath. What is twenty? Twenty is like lighting for a bathroom, twenty to uh fifty foot candles. So this is giving you an idea of the type of lighting. And then what I also have here. And this is specific for the other one. Which I can go into greater detail, lit, L I T, which I can go into details now. So foot candles is the way you measure light. So basically, just to rehash everything quickly. Gas canopy shall not exceed twenty foot candle, canopies for drive through fifteen. Auto or truck dealership shall not exceed twenty foot candles. Then there's this section, section three ladder up, that talks about uh digital outdoor display. This is with the light sensor, they're talking about between forty nits to five thousand nits. So what is a nit? It's it's a form of brightness that you usually see on your TV or let's say electronic message board, it's the luminosity. Right? So it's it's a unit of brightness, that's that's how it's considered a nit. So. Yeah, it comes from the Latin word to shine, so that's the reason. Now, when I was reading this ordinance several days ago, I'm like, what's forty nits, right? So just to give you an idea. Smartphones and tablets, they're between two hundred to one thousand nits. It's a lot of light that's falling into your eyes. Laptops are monitored, two hundred to six hundred nits. And then TVs between one hundred to two thousand, it depends on the type of TV you have, high definition versus regular. So when the ordinance says at night, let's say an electronic message board. Cannot illuminate no more than forty nits during the nighttime hour, this is to reduce in the luminosity. You don't be lighting with the lighting on. Five thousand nits is for daytime, it's higher because you have more light radiance. So you need more light coming out of the gloves. And that's what this particular subsection is talking about. Because we're talking about foot candle, all of a sudden, we're talking about misunderstanding, I just wanted to clarify. Right, because this deals with signage, it deals with electronic message board. We just had a variance that was asked by the school district on movable electronic message message board, right? One of the problems that came up, which the board chairman said, is we don't have a standard until now to measure the luminosity. Especially if you're having colors, or you're having photos or pictures that is blinking or moving. So this is a way to control with a measuring lighting device. Section four deals with the uses, and this is where the ordinance talks more about recreational uses. Which is your outdoor uses, which could be public or private, right? Uh, which talks about football fields, soccer, baseball, and all that. So that's more about can't have lights after eleven P M, but there's there's a program or something, the latest. By shutting down the lights. And then they also talk about outdoor displays, that's like your commercial, you know. Within a half hour after your business close, your lights should close for the outdoor display. It's kind of like you're displaying a true value for home decor. Again, the idea is to reduce the amount of light that's being being uh displayed in evening. Try to get the night scale, night scale, try to see more of the nighttime, this is luminosity with lights. Number five are the exemptions, right? Which is pretty pretty standard, roadways, airport lighting. Uh, temporary circus, fair, carnival, things that are on a temporary basis. Uh, construction or emergency lighting, temporary lighting, like the Christian Street lighting, the outdoor parking lot. Uh, lighting associated with a cultural pursuit. Uh, the exemptions, again, uh, the person may submit a written request. For an exemption, and this section six just goes over what should be explained in the exemption. Because at the very bottom of section six is, the zoning administrator, which would be my capacity. Will have fifteen days on the day of submission, they need letters A through J. On writing to have consideration for unique circumstances. This is where we go again with the uplighting for residential something. If you're saying, well, you know, this doesn't create a lot of light, this is just to light my house a little bit, you know, why are you creating this thing with me? The person could object, could could file something with me, so it's not like we're heavy handed. Now, number seven and eight, I left it in red because those were the new changes from the board, planning and zoning. So number number seven deals with the inspection, right? My idea is to eventually purchase a lighting meter to go out there to do the inspection, where if I have. Questions about, let's say, bigger development, I could ask them to provide me with lighting sampling. If it's exceeding, many people are saying, you know, the lights are going beyond my property line into another. You know, it's just a lot of light. I have that ability now to ask for it, either I do it myself with a limited reader, light reader. Or I hire them, or I tell them to provide me, you know, reference. Then the the final one, section eight is the lighting variances, so a person could apply for variances. It goes back to the trustee with the question about the light, you can apply for lighting variances. I need this light because it's a safety factor, this is the interest of my garage or house and stuff like this. So again, I'm not saying the next day after this gets passed, everybody's gonna be enforced. It's gonna happen in a naturally progressive manner.
So you you mentioned one thing, you're gonna eventually buy a light meter?
That's what's usually required for something for.
How expensive is a light meter?
I don't think they're that expensive.
The same with the decimal meter for audio noise. I mean, we should, you should have the proper equipment. The same with the decimal meter for audio noise. I mean, we should, you should have the proper equipment, is my opinion.
And this is a, this would be a conversation I would have with the administrator, with the mayor and stuff like that. But thi- this is to give us more. Protection against light.
Right. You gotta make sure they're calibrated, if any smart attorney.
Yes, just like, uh, just like, you know, video cameras.
You gotta spend the money, if they're not calibrated, any smart attorney's gonna. Roll that thing in the garbage.
Right, but. I need a smart attorney, that's why I'm looking around. But in this situation, I like. An adjudicator. Will be understandable, that the municipality doesn't have the equipment or the best. But the idea is to reduce the light, to have some control over the lighting, especially in the evening, for safety purposes, for zoning.
Okay, um, trustee Booth.
Um, more a comment than a question, but. Before we ever implemented this or did anything like that, I would like to to know about our village lighting. Because I don't wanna put something in place that we're in violation all over the place on, so. Meaning that if we have lights at our, you know, let's see, White Park or somewhere, that are in violation of what we're about to pass. Right, the village properties, I would like to make sure that we're in line with whatever standards we're about to put on the rest of the residents.
Right, that's why we run our exemption for civic organizations.
This could cause some issues, we wanna make sure we're.
Alright.
I'm sorry, it's just a big ordinance, and I wasn't here to create it or to debate it with you.
I know, Michael, I've heard him talk about this for a long time.
This is great, and your explanation is wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, thank you, um, the next item is. Okay, so item four, discussion regarding a text amendment to the village's zoning ordinance, section ten, dash fourteen, dash three. A nine, which regulates political signage within the village. Um, again, I think this is based on a spring birthday, correct?
Is, that is based on the case of Reed versus the town of Gilberts. Which reads that all sign regulation must be contrarian to neutral. Based on this case, the village's current regulation that restricts the timing of when political signs. Can be installed must be ruled is patently illegal. Only law also says that non-home role units cannot regulate outdoor political signs. We are coming up on election season, as some of you may know. Um, and as such, we thought it'd be an appropriate time before any political signs are out for this cycle, even though there are some lingering signs from the last cycle. To ensure that the uh, the signs are changed, such that political signs shall not be attached to fences. Um, trees, utility poles, pro light poles, sewage, which is the opposite right away. Um, though it does a difference, you can't have litter. Um, and such signs shall not be erected with, like, with triangle angles where safety concerns. So you couldn't put it to block. In some communities that I represent, they have four-by-four or eight-by-eight signs, I have not seen one of those. In the Village of Antioch, but we could have a sign that creates a whole mess. I apologize, Howard, I think that, uh, this is your show, and uh, your first night, this guy's already talking, but.
No, but this is, but this is a legal concern, and this is something that most municipalities are eventually changing. So it comes down to two things, we have to treat all signs fairly, right? Religious sign versus a regular sign. And then the second one is the content, we can't regulate content, but we can regulate the size of the sign. Which could be for commercial or residential. The problem here is we have a time limit of how the signs could be placed before and after, that's what's being crossed out. In the ordinance that's here, but basically, we do, we're removing the timing.
Well, the the good thing is that our elections are in the spring, so the signs can only go up in. Up in the ground, otherwise you're drilling holes in the ground to get the sign in the ground. And and nothing, and Antioch seems to have a tradition that the signs, political signs for the most part, except for one or two. Spragglers from the state somewhere, um, their signs are gone within one or two days, next day.
Oh, no, I fought that, that was up forty-five days prior. And I got fought with Wally, I. Former charges, ripping signs down, I had, I fought with Michael Garrigan on them. And I brought this case to vote, all, everybody, I fought with everybody on this, I banned them on private property, I fought on this court case. And they lost them. I won. The charge is no longer here, thank you.
So we're good with moving on with this one, taking rid, getting rid of it? So, if you're watching, you can start putting up your signs tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we didn't pass it yet. Wait a couple of weeks.
So, typically signage or one of those, I mean, review. So if someone's applying for a sign permit, I would be the person who would be reviewing it, I would be the person also be enforcing the signage. Especially signage that are prohibited under general signage ordinance. Just to, you know, just to, you know, keep it, it's signs just don't, they're ruckus, they appear. There's always a rhyme and a reason, there's a review process. And some are temporary signs, and then I will have the proper date, so if someone has a question, why is this person having a sign for such a long period? I guess in what's been reported in the fate, but this is the time, this is time to them. And those are general sign. You know, random bit.
Any questions about this one? So we'll, we'll have this one up at the next meeting.
Oh, this is Jimmy, alright, this is cannabis, uh, discussion, number five, discussion regarding a text amendment. The village code amending sections four to two B, dash six and four dash fourteen dash four. The Village of Antioch Code regarding licenses selling products containing petra, whatever, petra cannabis. Again, as a board, we should be proud of ourselves that we're at the forefront of this and the news all the time.
Do you mind doing what I mean? Um, so it says, some, some of the members of board may have noticed, some of our tobacco licensees. Um, seem to have begun to selling products that were probably not terribly comfortable with as a community. And as we dug into this, we found that, you know, much as we feared when we first passed the ordinance regulating Delta eight, that, um, there were changed. Minor chemical compounds within the products they're manufacturing to get around the ordinances that many communities are passing. So this is simply an amendment, and it has brought to my attention that. Uh, one shop in particular, you know, starting to look like a traditional head shop again, with, it looks like, almost looks like a cannabis dispensary. Come to find out that they've pretty much moved out of the Delta eight, moved into this new format of, um, modified double nine. So this attempts to break that under regulation, um. People will have conversations during enforcement period with them, to kinda highlight that this is gonna be the path that we're gonna go down. So they kinda relent and understand that the intent of the board is to keep these products out of our community. And if we have to come back there, they're meeting in a manner, adding products that we're gonna sell. Uh, so they can, they can waste their money.
Isn't that shop happening with your license?
Yes, yeah. Well.
Same one?
Same one, so, I don't understand why. What's going on with them to be a rule breaker?
Is this the one who broke the door out and broke their wall down, built a shit, what they call it, separate shop?
Yeah, and they're not, they're not alone, there's others there, are scurrying issue in the same fashion, and speaking with other. Communities that have never took enforcement actions such as this.
Every other community don't have a liquor license. They got a liquor license, they could be, I think we could be a little stronger.
Um, they're technically not violating the code, um, trustee, if you wanna talk to me afterwards, um. We are changing the code to increase the scope of certain products that come through. That would fall under the purview of the ordinance, which may not fall under the purview of an ordinance at this point in time. Just if you're okay.
I have a question, um, Jimmy, we, you know, uh, I think it was about a week ago, I saw some news coverage. That the state and the governor thought they were passing. A pro- prohibition to these type of drugs, and then it, did it fail or didn't get called? Or what happened? Do you know what's the current status of?
I know exactly. The governor, um. The governor had pushed a bill and called and tried to whip or, you know, um. Persuade legislators to, um, vote for a ban on this, and. Brandon Johnson, the mayor of the city of Chicago, Brandon Johnson, also called legislatures and. Well, legislators to have this bill killed and not called. And under the guise of, let me rephrase that, with the explanation that this would hurt economic development in the city of Chicago. Um, the bill was not called. So despite the governor's efforts to move this forward and honestly catch up to the city, in the Village of Antioch, it was its. Fourth, uh, fourth analytic, uh, legislation and regulatory controls, the bill wasn't even called. Interestingly enough, this, it was called in the Senate, and I believe, I could be wrong, it only got one no vote. So it passed, it flew through the Senate and did not even get called in the House. Um, I was not down there, um, so I have no comment on what the backstories were. Um, but it did, yeah, it's def- it's definitely gonna come back again.
Would that replace all of what we have here?
And we wrote it that way. Correct, so we wrote it that way, we wrote this, if you remember when it was done, trustee, and this excellent point. The mayor directed that we write this with flexibility because, um, these things are an evolving process. I always think of this as like, um, performance enhancing drugs for sports, right? There's always like one person trying to do the science a little bit better. And in the same way, we had always had that once the state. Um, finds itself in a responsible position to regulate this, then our ordinance by design would fall away. Um, the state did not call this bill. And, um, if for whatever reason, that's not, uh, that's not mine to say, I am just telling you that historical facts.
Do we know of any other villages that, that make our bill or our ordinance, and do we have a number on that or anything?
At least five have called me to use our bill as a template and a model. Um, and Highland Park, and there was. There was some debate over who the first person was, and I reminded them of the time, you can check ordinances, it's very strange. But you can check ordinances, see when one person passes it versus another, and you guys were the first, you should be really proud of yourselves, you guys were the first.
Trustee Pierce.
Uh, the only concern I have with this is probably a procedural concern. It turned out when we passed this, with great forethought, it seems. That the loophole was, well, whatever inventory they had, they could burn through their inventory, so if they, if somebody bought it. Two years worth of inventory, it was two years before they had to stop selling it. Is there any way to limit to like a thirty-day caption on this, where so they can't. Say, oh, they're getting ready to pass this, let me, uh, buy a whole bunch of this crap and then sell it for the next two years, make, make money at the expense of our kids.
This is an excellent piece of legislation that was written, and you should all be very proud of yourselves for passing it. One, there needs to be some flexibility with regard to this because. Our constitution is a great living document, breathing document. However, it does not allow us to take property without just compensation of people, if these people bought it. And they wanna process it, the whole point to avoid any of that was to allow them to work through their inventory. So, while trustee, your point is well taken and well received, my concern would be. That we have this beautiful thing, and it worked. And it worked so well that people with enormous egos are calling, that they use, you know, how do you guys get this done? And if we do that, we may tread into a legal quid pro quo. I prefer not to tread into a legal quid pro quo for something that seems to be the forefront of regulation. But I defer to the board, it's the board's decision. Don't do it.
But they could say it's an illegal taking.
It's taking, and then we would have to pay, and here's the thing, the taking would be a minor consequence. The problem being, somebody's gonna challenge all this stuff, and then we're gonna be in court forever, nobody wants. No one wants to pay for court bills to go on forever.
I see your bills, I know.
Would, would we be able to, uh, put in a, put a drop dead date of like, say, January one of twenty twenty-six. Which would give them a year or even longer as a period where after that point, none of this is allowed to be sold. Any current inventory, I mean, that would give them a, an out, in a sense where they'd be able to use everything for. They have, and they can't say that, well, we keep having inventory or.
And I, I would have to do a little bit of research, um, on a, on a kind of a connective matter, um, it is an organic product.
As I say, expiry, this stuff's gotta.
Kind of limited shelf life, where they, before becoming quite a current expired product, I would have to research what that shelf life is and. You know, we may, maybe going down a path that would just, this resolves itself because the.
So if it's got a shelf life, can we write in here? Or can we regulate the shelf life? Because if somebody's a narrative well enough to not wanna. Not care whether they're killing kids or endangering the lives of our residents, they're not gonna care what the, what the, the expiration date is.
I do, I do not want to get into the, um, regulations of shelf lives and. We're a non-home role unit that has a lot of authority with regarding, regarding the regulation of liquor licenses. If we remember, there was always a jurisdictional assurance, where do we come into our control? And through the foresight of this body, we knew we could latch on through liquor control. I think it is a, it's a very big breach for us to start talking about expiration dates and whatnot. On regulated products, especially products that the state of Illinois is now declining to enforce additional regulation. Uh, so trustee, again, point very well taken, but I am not in a position to say that I'm the FDA or quasi-FDA-like authority to say these are. Regulation dates, and they should be taken off shelf. Is that fair? I'm ruining all your fun.
Alright, we'll hold on this next time too. Uh, don't go too far, because I think we gotta talk about if you could drink it, or wine walks, next, right? Okay, I have a text, I have a text. Uh, six is, uh, discussion regarding a text amendment to the village code, amending six, dash two, dash five, dash two of the village. Code regarding advertising, the distribution of alcohol or tobacco, and village property events sponsored by the Village of Antioch, Illinois. Um, so again, this is, uh, there is something in our code that says that, uh, Jimmy, you can come up.
No, if you guys have questions.
Can't advertise, sponsor, anything about alcohol at these events, we have wine walks and concerts, all types of. I think it's a little outdated at this point. Um, the code, if you, drawing your attention to page, try powder one hundred and ninety-eighty, or. Uh, packet, it literally just strikes the language, it is expressly forbidden to advertise the distribution of alcohol or tobacco on any village or property. Before dating or after, if that's sponsored by the village, we believe strongly in this, and look forward to presenting this for approval, um, after a way worth of second reading. That's the next one. Any questions? Alright, uh, onto some reports, um. I'll work backwards, why don't we do, um, so, I know finance is not here, but, uh, the new finance director is brand new and. They did through lots of paperwork, so I'm not gonna put him on the spot tonight regarding the finance reports, um. We'll go to police next.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight about imports of peace of training, the operation on tax with staffing limitations. And the steps are important to take in the challenges. Pastor Amanda Macko, she wants seventeen, school resource officer, she recently completed a short report for Dallas training, due to the school district. elaborate with them to. Response training to not only other staff at the school, but also to our police officers and. Officer Piper has transitioned from academy to field training, and is progressing through his sixth week. He must still complete another ten weeks of training to meet the standards required for solo patrol at bay. Officers Brogan and Corillo began their academy on January sixth, they're on track to graduate April twenty-fifth. And through their field training, we're hoping to hit them solo patrol by August, September, depending on the phase of autumn. Achieving solo patrol is a milestone that signifies an officer's met all expectations and standards to serve a layover like uniform patrol officer. However, this process takes time, typically more than a year from the officer's initial appointment. While this training period is essential to ensure officer readiness, it impacts staffing levels and our ability to operate at full capacity. It's important to acknowledge the operational challenges created by staffing gaps, while the board has seen several new officers appointed recently. The process of training and preparing them for solo patrol stands well beyond a year. When we lose an officer due to a forecast or unforecast retirement or separation, it takes significant time and resources to build that position. When we lose an officer to a forecasted or unforecasted retirement or separation, it takes significant time and resources to fill that position. This is one of the primary reasons, reasons we continue to see higher levels of overtime. To maintain the operations and community needs or add a gate with staff limitations we have. At Board's Lane, this trend is expected to continue into the next fiscal year. Recruitment remains a critical focus for us. To date, our current testing numbers comparable to last year's putting this on pace to meet. Or exceed our prior recruitment levels, however, it's worth noting that historically, we've tested every two years. Due to decreased interest in the profession industry wide, we now are conducting tests annually with the next one scheduled for February. Uh, this shift has increased costs and placed additional strain on our investigators. Who are responsible for conducting the depth backgrounds of those applicants. Despite these challenges though, we remain, remain committed to identifying and boarding only the best candidates to serve this community. Finally, we're pleased to share that Chief Gutjow was recently reelected to Lee County Chiefs of Police Executive Board for a second term. This recognition, recognition is a testament to his legacy, ensuring departments committed to leadership and collaboration with regional law enforcement programs.
Thank you, um. I think we also said community developments on the edge of this night. Howard, did you have anything, have you any developments? Um, yeah, let's give us a, why don't we just? No, I'll just tell you, um. At a high level, uh, Howard, uh, I did have a conversation. This is my second. Um, seeing this group, but we had a more high level discussion about the St. Peter's site and their plans for it, um. Their original plan was a larger plan of rental housing, townhouses.
Well, the idea was to revitalize the existing school building, they kind of. Convent into rentals and to build, uh, townhouses and small cottages, I think. Uh, now the idea is to do away with the townhouses and the cottage to provide more green space. Or maybe to expand on the footprint of the exist- existing school building. So that was the discussion we had today.
And they've shifted to a fifty-five and older.
Can we make that in a few D?
That's what we did.
Gotta be a few D because here's the problem. We've always had more, there are people come in here that own property. And we pull brother and sister, oh, you can't build, you can't build that apartments. Even though they own the land for years and years and years, then now these people don't even come to the board and they wanna change it. And you got all the residents that surround it. So if they wanna do a fifty-five and older. If, if they put in a contract, the buyer buys it, you have to update. So you gotta do it a few D somewhere, to hold that forever.
Okay, I'll pat you on the back here for a second, okay? I sat in the, um, Zoom call with, uh, Howard for an hour plus and, um, Howard. Brought this up, this idea, um, and he was also very, I wanna say forceful in asking questions. That would be asked by board members and, uh, planning and zoning members. So believe me, uh, based on what I saw him discuss with them, when they come to us or planning, they're gonna be very well prepared. To, you know, to check out the boxes, um. We did suggest that they at least bring the concept of the planning and zoning soon so they know, hey, you're up or down. But you kept saying PUD over and over to them.
Right, so, so there's two ways to do this. Either you change the zoning, which creates sponsoring, which is not recommended because currently the zone is R two, single family homes, a multi-family. Or the second, under the PUD, it's either the size of the property or the number of units. If there's more than twenty-two units, then they comply for a PUD. So under the PUD requirements, I have some structure where, you know, you need to dedicate open space and what have you. Some of the discussions I had is, you have an existing neighborhood, you can't build a security fence around your property, have it gated. I spoke about having transparency, have it open, create maybe a walkway between one street to another. Provide some green space for people, benches, maybe a chess table. We were talking about, uh, farming, uh, uh, what is it?
He was talking about having plots there where people have gardens.
My memory goes, where they've got that garage. That's an actual, and the, on the plot, that's an actual road that used to go through there.
And I brought that up because I said, that looks like an Eastman's or a property. So we need to have some connectivity.
And that goes right behind, right, or right behind all those, all those buildings, commercial and residential.
Right, so I brought this up and I said, look, you're dealing, you have to, you have to look at, I look at it in a bigger picture. This is an existing neighborhood of single family homes. But what they're doing, they're at, they're gonna go through the PUD, they're gonna go through the notification process, right? Neighbors are gonna get involved, they're gonna say yes or no, they're gonna show up or they're gonna provide comments. So I told them that you have to provide services or amenities that helps the community at large, you can't. So we're talking about, you know, like communal gardening. We're also talking about maybe have them open up the people pool court in their gym to people within the neighborhood. The idea is to have, um, you know, synergy between existing and new.
So, and it could be nice. To be emails, they get, they get trees, since they're property now, they get trees growing on my property. I give a call and say, get your trees off, or I'm gonna go cut them down.
So, what I also mentioned is like, provide me with examples of your different types of development, I wanna see. I wanna know, I wanna learn more about your management company because I brought up a lot of scenarios where things could go, you know, sideways. So I was kind of forceful, but forceful, he was very forced.
I was kind of uncomfortable, but he was very forced.
The thing is this, these questions are gonna be asked at the village board level, at the chair level, or at the planning and zoning. To have an application being tabled two, three times because I'm not asking these questions at the beginning, it's a disservice to anyone.
Thank you.
So my idea is to bring an application that's gonna be complete as best as possible.
I think that's New Jersey in you.
I, I'm just thinking that if you want to conform and be complete and the simplest possible, just talk to me about myths.
No, but, oh, my, my, this is, this is the way I look at it. If a person is serious, they're gonna invest the time and the energy and the money to do a product that's nice. I come from other places where concept plans are not really. Welcomed. A lot of business, a lot of communities are like, if you're interested, you submit a site plan and you go through the various process or a special use, what have you. Keep in mind, the PUD is a special use process, so they're asking for special consideration. As the community, as a representative of the community, I'm asking for amenities that they can provide to the community, this open space, green space. I'm not against fencing, but you can have nice wrought iron decorative fence. In different segments of the, of the property, which you still allow for some people to cross and trespass. I mean, Eastman or something like that, to provide some continuity instead of having a, you know, little walled area. You know, six foot privacy fence, this is my property, you know, I don't want them allowed to enter and exit. So I, I brought this up and I brought up the examples, show me, I wanna know, because I wanna present this to the boards. If they're saying they're, you're a type A development company, I wanna see type A. And I'm also gonna, you know, vet, vet the management company. How, how many units would they talk to? So there's, the limit for what they're proposing the most is seventy. Seventy, seven zero.
I think they were adding a floor, you said, right?
Hence the reason why Howard is like, I need to see a concept plan. If you want to provide us with three different concept plan. Shows on, show us the existing footprint of the existing buildings and how are you gonna expand?
So theoretically, that could be a hundred and forty people, if it's a fifty-five and over, a hundred and forty people living in it.
Right, so the idea is to have the convent building, this is what he said earlier today in our communication. Single bedroom apartment, but in the school building, two bedroom.
Wow.
Right.
Did they mention, is this a higher end development or? I mean, he would say, he was throwing numbers around, uh, when Michael and I were here of, you know. Uh, he was giving numbers on like, you know, twenty foot, you know, twenty-two thousand, twenty-five hundred and higher. But, you know, he's talking in the, yeah, two, three, four thousand dollar range, so yes, definitely higher end finishes. And again, we wanna see all this and after listening to Howard on the phone with him today, I'm sure when he comes in here, he's gonna have all those.
Eventually, a hundred, a hundred and forty cars.
He was talking about a, a gra- uh.
Right.
Yeah.
He proposes a lot of things, but the devil's in the details, right? Until I see something, a cost of plan, it's all just discussion.
Right.
Is, is this gonna be a building, uh, like a tear down and rebuild or is this gonna, he's gonna remodel that building? It's not gonna go any higher.
Possibly a story taller. Cause the school building is two and a half stories and I brought this up, are we gonna go a floor higher? Yes. I brought up the suggestion, wouldn't it be just better for you to tear down the two buildings? He said, because of the cultural, because of, you know, the history there, he wants to remodel. Which sometimes remodeling is more expensive than building a new building, especially meeting with building codes, because now I'm also asking the building code questions.
What is their ordinance as far as how many stories? Isn't it three?
Yeah, and it's also controlled by the height, thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, right. That's what, three and a half stories? Ish.
Keep in mind, but keep in mind. That's regular planning and, you know, they're gonna go for, you know, changing the zone for that property, which we don't encourage. No one encourages that, and they would have to follow the, uh, single family. All requirements, but under the HUD, we have flexibility on both sides.
And we didn't want you guys, I mean, the reason you brought this up is, we had this conversation today. We don't wanna hear it through the church, through Facebook, on the. But again, bringing the transparency. Is something that. Do, do we know what they take? Seven fifty, I know, I like that. And that includes all the parking behind it, church and everything?
That's not the church?
No, 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 up to the street, I'm sorry.
Right, up to the street, which is the public right of way. Then he wants to preserve the way it is. Now, I have some questions about lumbering, some landscaping. And I said, you're not gonna have a problem with the parishioners going to church and trying to park on the school property? He says, no, you're not allowed. So I started asking these questions.
And lower church people are gonna park, so if the jewel says you can't park a jewel, there's nowhere for the church to park. It's, I'm just gonna say this right now. It's gonna be a matter of time before St. Peter's is totally gone. Because they're losing parishioners, they're going to the other church of forty-five, so it's just a matter of time. And there's no parking, and Jewel says, the jewel is saying, you can't park there, cause we need parking for your customers, cause now all the parking. Has moved from back to over their parking lot. That's gonna be an issue for parking.
And I did bring up the parking, brought up the, uh, church parking and the residential component of the parking. So, until I see a concept plan, it's all hypothetical.
You know, I will say this. I was visiting the town I grew up in and they took one of their high school, junior high that I went to.
Right.
And converted into senior house, senior housing. And it looked, it looked beautiful, I mean, they, they maintained all the wood, they maintained all the floors, they. They, they, they made this beautiful thing out of this thing that was high end. Had a mixture of low income requirement with the high in, income requirement. But it was a beautiful thing, it looked like, wow, that'd be really nice. But this sounds like a monster. I, I'll tell you honestly, I'm not a fan of increasing our apartment stock in this village. But I know it's needed and people want it, but I'm not a fan of it, this sounds like a good one.
I, I don't get, maybe I, I think I can read people, I think Howard, you can back me up and I doubt they're listening, but. I've worked with and known through my career in real estate, it's up a lot of developers. And they seem genuine and wanna do good, you kinda get the, you know, you can feel when somebody's coming in. A little slimy or something, but this, I did not, we did not get that, at least I didn't get that vibe on this.
Right, but density is of course, and I do understand where you're coming from, because you have single family homes. Like I told, this is a farm land that's being converted, it's, it's your little gated community. You know, you access through the main, uh, arterial road. This is a, a living, working community, so. Density is gonna be an issue I'm gonna bring up and I wanna try and reduce it. But this is gonna be through the planning and zoning, the content department, right? Where the chairman or the board members will say, you know, we have a, we have an issue with density, we wanna see maybe not seventy, but fifty. Or we wanna see some allowances.
Absolutely, having your mother mom figure out.
She would kick you out.
I, and, and the mayor, the mayor can attest. I went over and over about the existing neighborhood, the people there. You know, this is something that you're asking for special permission, you need to work with the community.
We got somebody that's, will make sure they're in line, so, I, yes, um, alright, I, anything else on community development?
Not necessarily, I just wanted to tell everyone here, I started Wednesday of last week, so I'm bringing myself up to speed on all of the cases that were referred last year. Planning and zoning to get a further understanding of the marketplace. The core development project, which will be heard earlier tonight, um, also AR, ARFAX, ARMAX, right? Bring myself up and try to provide more information. Cause I, I think that's critical, it's not like, oh, we trust you're gonna do this at the building permit, you know. Particularly the market we can see, proportion, my idea is to get everything up and running up in front. So there's things that we tweak, we can tweak. So naturally, when we're talking about big projects, I'm gonna look at a traffic study, I'm gonna look at environmental concerns, especially if you're near the flood. Bridge or flood plain area, right, we're, we're in here and our pot tracker engineer that we have. But I'm also gonna look at density and I'm also gonna look at building massing and architecture. For these project sites, because we have a very powerful ordinance that talks about site plan review and what's being required. And I know Michael was very particular about architecture, I read his reports. Where he goes into architecture, he talks about parking, so I think we're in a good way in the sense that. Also, I'm, I'm also getting involved with building, I wanna be more involved with building. I already mentioned that to Jim Hilton, the inspector. I have a liking for buildings, so this is something else, you know, like I mentioned, I have to get myself up to speed. What, what, what this municipality allows or disallows for building permits or other things. But you know, eventually the bigger picture, business license applications, re-inspections, landlord, these are things that, you know, I've. I've, I've done and I've worked in other communities, which I think would be a benefit here. But these are things that I'm gonna start looking at towards the spring. My, my idea now is observation and listening and trying to get appeal for the community. What I realize is a lot of people who live here, live here forever, which is a good thing. So if you have people moving in, they're different businesses, you have to respect the continuity. The cultural and historical significance of this community and the people that live here. Stuff like that, so this is what I'm gonna take into account when I'm talking to these developers, we need development, stuff like that.
I, I will just, no, I'm, I will just warn you. My experiences are logged to me, you know, after working, it's kinda like sales through, buy, easy, easy, no problems. Anyhow, suffice it, we're, 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 we're a hardworking community, full of volunteers, but we're feisty.
Right.
And, and we, we discuss everything ad nauseam and we, we make sure we go all the way, but I'll.
Right, because we can't go on the, oh, we trust the developer, he or she is gonna do it up the act, no. We have to put things in place. Or callbacks, right? You're gonna do this, what is the callback? If you fail to keep your restaurant open, one of these are parcel.
We're gonna pull the club home.
He's talking twenty years ago, he's.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, well, welcome and thank you.
And also code enforcement, right? The mayor and I, we had a good discussion about code enforcement, I'm a firm believer, we have the codes, we should enforce it. So I'll be doing enforcement on behalf of zoning, or Jim will be doing the building, and then we'll also have the officer. And the police department doing other types of enforcement. But my idea is to do enforcement in a gradual manner, be respectful of the people in the community. Many times people are not informed of the ordinance, so try to work with the people and try to make things better. It's about image, it's about property values, it's about safety, and I'm looking at all of that.
Sounds great.
Questions? I thank you, Howard, welcome. Thank you. I do not have any requests for executive session, so I assume. Alright, then I would, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I need to trustee Peterson. I can trustee McNeil, all in favor? Any opposed?